Now to the afternoon part of our agenda, which is to discuss more specifically the budget items. Starting with public safety, moving to broader budget concepts. And then if council will talk to us about active transportation investments, whether that's today or today and Friday, or today and Friday in the 12th, or what the schedule is for that. You want to hit that question first, Ed? Do you know yet?
So I think that the posting you have today is about the budget, which is obviously very broad. And the budget contains things that relate to active transportation. If we get to it at the end of the day, I think you can certainly raise the issue. There's no action that you all are going to take today. I've not posted to take any action. And then I know that on the agenda for Friday, you have a meeting with Project Connect. And it looks like the agenda just posted. I don't know if there's something specific you want to talk about it, have a different meeting. We can deal with that. And then we will post it. You're going to be calling the election next week, and we will post it for those meetings.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's start with the with the budget manager. Ed, we'll turn it over to you now.
Yeah, thanks. I'm going to turn it right over to Ed Benino, who's going to tee up this conversation, this first section around public safety.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome back, council members. The next topic that we have on your agenda is a discussion of various concepts for reimagining public safety that we have seen posted to the council message board. I'll take a moment to summarize those different concepts. We've looked at what has been posted and tried to summarize them in the sub bullets of this agenda item. Before I do that, though, I just wanted to mention that clearly there's a very lengthy, over a 100-page document of supporting information, which is the actual text of those message board posts and additional documents that were attached to those message board posts. Over the lunch break, we sent out an addendum to that backup material. There was one or two items that we missed. But I think importantly, it may help with this afternoon's conversation because there's so much information as we compiled what we hope will be a helpful table table of contents for all those backup materials. So you'll be able to quickly reference the different materials. And again, essentially, there are message board posts related to reimagining public safety, message board posts related to other budget topics. And then also a variety of council budget questions that we thought were relevant to the topics that were up for discussion. So I think that table of contents maybe will help everybody get to information that you may be interested in referencing. With the logistics out of the way, let me just kind of summarize what we've seen in regards to these different concepts for reimagining public safety. Those concepts primarily have come from message board posts from Councilmember Flanagan, Councilmember Cool, and Councilmember Kazar. So once I'm done summarizing them, I would certainly turn to those three council members to maybe add additional context and commentary around the proposals that they've posted. But first, and I'm just reading off of the agenda on the very first page of the document I sent you last night, under 4A, we saw a variety of proposals relating to delaying or eliminating future cadet classes. As you know, we've already delayed the July class. But there are proposals that would call for us to delay additional cadet classes and to cut additional unfilled sworn positions out of the budget, which would result in additional savings that could be reallocated to other budget areas. Another broad category of proposals we've seen pertained to making cuts to the Austin Police Department's budget, specifically cuts to the overtime budget, mounted patrol, the explosives and ballistics line item, which is the line item that's used for paying for ammunition primarily. The K-9 unit and the Explorers program all have been mentioned as areas for potential cutting or reductions. There also was a reference to reviewing the budget for the Fusion Center with an eye towards what's the appropriate level of funding for that for that center. The 4C, there was some proposals that spoke to reducing under or overfunded line items. So essentially, looking at the line item budget of Austin Police Department and identifying those line items where the budget's been higher than what the actual expenditures were. And then lowering the budgets to be in alignment with prior year actuals. I will say right off the bat that there's somewhat of a problem with that one because there's also line items where the police department has spent more than what they had budgeted. And that's just the way a budget works, is it's a spending plan. And sometimes you have, you need to spend more than you were planning in some areas, and you need to make up for it by saving in other areas. So a budget's never going to 100% line up to actual expenditures. It's really intended to be a guideline and a plan. On 4D, item 4D was a broad proposal from Councilmember Flanagan to replace the current Austin Police Department with five departments, Department of Patrol, Department of Investigations, Department of Traffic Safety, a Department of Professional Standards, and a civilian, I the Department of Emergency Communications and Technology. Somewhat similar to that is this 4E, this idea of taking things that are currently APD budget and moving them out of the budget, moving them to another department, or perhaps even in some cases, maybe moving them to a non-city entity. That's been something that's been discussed in regards to forensics. But you can see a long list of things I grabbed from the different message board posts that are viewed as being opportunities to move functional areas out of the Austin Police Department's chain of command. 4F is a proposal to move APD command staff out of their current downtown town headquarters and initiate a community-led effort to repurpose that site. And then finally, a proposal to create a calendar for implementing future changes to Austin Police Department's budget. So we tried to capture everything. I think that does a pretty good job of summarizing the various proposals we've seen. But again, I would defer to Councilmembers Flanagan, Cool, or Councilmember Kazar to add any additional commentary they think would be helpful for the discussion.
Okay, Kazar or Cool?
I'd be happy to run through the items that I posted just at a high level, if that's what folks would like.
They're going to high level, and then we'll give people a chance to be able to ask questions in detail if they have any.
Okay.
And we'll have everybody kind of lay out their proposals before we start asking questions about any of them, so people can address them collectively if they want to.
And Mayor, if I could, before Councilmember Cool starts, just mention that we have ACM Ariano and Deputy City Manager Rivera Vandepieck, and Chief Manley on the panel. And so if our IT people haven't done it already, if you can move them over to the panelists so they can assist with questions that might come up.
Okay, so first off, thank yous always are in order. And that would be to our advocates in the community, our professionals on our staff, city hall staff, and the council office staff, and folks with APD and the Budget Office. Everybody is really pitching in and doing the best they can, and I still appreciate that. I'm looking at changes that we can and should make now, changes we can make in the midterm as we work toward the mid-year budget adjustment, and then a sustained effort over the next year and longer. And that speaks to the calendar that we've been talking about. So if you look at the two tables that I pulled together, you'll see full budget proposal, APD department reductions. And on the other side, APD operations realigned to other departments. And I'll just go through this really, really quick. And I'm glad the staff are on here to answer specific questions. On the reductions table, several potential cuts. Hold the hiring for reimagining, and this essentially puts off new hires. And so we have the right curriculum for training and making sure that we have the tools to improve the culture within our department, and that also goes to recruitment. We need to build trust in the community, let them guide us toward the curriculum and the cultural changes that will be responsive to their needs. I recognize that the state has specific training for law enforcement officers. And we are, I am personally talking about the training that the city provides. The second one, excess and unspent funds. My staff and I identified several areas with large amounts of unspent funds. We checked our work with the criminal justice advocates, made sure that our lists align. It's not an exhaustive list. There's unspent dollars that are still to be identified and could be added here. But there you see excessive unspent funds. I think Ed or someone earlier today pointed out on ammunition and tools that we have significant unspent dollars here, and there's more opportunities for reallocations there. With regard to the bomb squad, because I did have some people contact me about the item when I had it, just the broad framework of my proposals originally on the message board, there was some assertions that we were intending or I was proposing to do away with the bomb squad. And obviously, that is not the case. The bomb squad does have a specific targeted and very important mission. The point here is there's a whole lot of ammunition that hasn't been used and dollars that are not assigned, and we need to carefully assess them and see them as opportunities for reallocations. Units to remove and programs to delay. Here's where I think we really need to have a deep conversation with our community about how we're using animals, how animals are trained and used by the police force, especially in communities of color. This goes for the mounted unit, it goes for the interdiction K-9. When we talk to folks about reimagining, we need guidance on how or whether we move forward with these cuts. I will say that it is a deep concern to me to see horses used as, not exactly battering rams, but I think some people could see them as battering rams and certainly as a bulwark. And that's a concern, and I would like to have a conversation in our community about that. The Explorers program, you'll see it's a small number there. I'm talking about delaying the Explorers program. Schools aren't at capacity, and I know we want to re-envision our recruiting. So that would be a holdoff, a delay. And then the alarm permits program, I think a couple of folks have talked about that. I believe those are not sworn officers doing the alarms, and that could be transferred to DSD potentially. I do have some, let's see, okay. And then, oops, did I just lose you guys? My computer went dark. Okay, specialized, all right. Moving to the APD realignments table, we've discussed several of these. I have a few additional changes to point out. Also, the dollar amounts you see on the table represent civilians at APD in each of these sections, separated out sworn officers and left their funding at APD. Communications, we've discussed 911 and dispatch already. The second section on communication, this one has to do with APD's Public Information and Communications divisions. And here's where I think we should ask our staff to look for more efficiencies here. Perhaps we can combine our communications across the city into one central department. I will point out that APD has a duplicative HR division, and I would like to look at that and see if there are some efficiencies we can get as well. Under independent investigations, we have talked about this. Staff has indicated that they are looking at this. I support moving them. I've made a note acknowledging that internal affairs needs to be a larger discussion because with legal and with our, in our legal, with our legal staff and with our community, because we need to see what they'd like to see here and what moves we can make legally. The focus, I think, should be on accountability and independence for both of these public services. Traffic and roadway management, we've talked about this as well. I would just ask staff to work with the receiving departments to make sure they are prepared to do the work. I'm supportive of moving a lot of these traffic functions out of APD, again, trying to get the department back to its core mission. But we do need to talk with our Transportation Department and roadway management folks on that topic. The specialized patrol, if there is a way that we can shift these functions out of APD so that the community can be part of our collaboration to execute smooth safety and smooth out safety at special events, then I think that would be a good move. Maybe we can get some help from our Parks Department on how to approach patrols on the lake as well. At the same time, I'm really concerned about ensuring safety and rescue operations are possible, and so we have to have those conversations. And then the last two things I'll say here, technology and alarm permits, these operations can be shifted out of the department, they can function well elsewhere. And with victim services, we've talked about this before. I think we can find a way to foster more independence for the victim services providers while we also maintain their ability to collaborate closely with APD officers. And then just to top this off, I recognize, I think we all recognize, the process will take longer than just this week or next to get this budget done. We do need to remember that the actions we're taking now signal to the larger community what our intentions are. My goal is to have a stronger and a safer community, and I look forward to working with everybody on your proposals as well to get us to that end. Thanks.
Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kazar.
My chart is not that different from much of what Councilmember Poole shared. And so I'm going to, I think I can just share that now and point out any places where there's a lot of overlap or places where it's different. I'm trying to see, I'm trying file share here for the first time. So wish me luck, let's see if this works. Can y'all, can you see this?
Yes.
What I need to figure out is actually how to move it around on the screen. Let's see. I think this is only just showing the first page of the document, so I don't know if this is going to work. Is there a way for me to share my screen and not just the document?
Yeah, when you share the document, each of us individually can change the screen, but it doesn't allow you to control it, so you'd have to share your screen to do that.
There is an option, there's an option to share your content and then share screen one or however many screens you have, and it will screen this.
I missed the first part of that sentence.
So go down to share content.
Yep.
And then under share content, you'll see screen one or just screen or something. That's going to be the one you want.
I see it says share a file and new whiteboard. So this might, if it just doesn't work, that's okay.
Okay, so it's like.
Ed, I have the file. If you want to unshare your screen, I think I can share it for you.
Great, thank you, that'd be great. Now I just have to figure out how to unshare the thing. Is there a way for you guys to, being unshared? Thank you, great. Ed, if you would share that, that'd be great.
So I think I'm having the same issue that the council member has. There's not an ability in what we've been given to share a screen only to share a file where you have to then choose it from in your list of hard drive files.
We can't figure it out in the next minute or so, it's okay, I'll do my best to narrate it.
If CTM has the file, then they can do it on their end.
I do not have the file.
Give us one second, we'll try to pull it off the message board.
It is on the message board. Or Jimmy, if you want to describe your stuff while they maybe pull that up?
Sure. So my proposals are the same as they were when I described them at the last work session. I really think about the proposals that Councilmember Kazar and Councilmember Poole have laid out are the more immediate decisions in front of us. And the proposals that I'm laying out, I hope, are more of a framework to think about this kind of reimagining work moving forward. The headquarters proposal, I think, is self-explanatory. I don't know that it represents necessarily a budget amendment, but more of a budget writer to initiate a process. And then the restructuring, I'm really hoping that as we go through everyone's proposals today and staff goes and looks at what the legal and logistical steps are required to implement that, that as we look towards Thursday's Public Safety Committee meeting, which will be another opportunity to dig into the public safety components of these topics if we find ourselves with remaining details at the end of today. But that staff could then come back and say, this piece is doable in two weeks, this piece is doable in two months, this piece is doable in six months. And that would help set up for the public in a way that we could adopt all at once, but set up also for the public, as Councilmember Poole articulated, our intention to move this forward and hopefully on what schedule.
Jimmy, were you too fast explaining it? Did we get it figured out, or should I just talk instead?
I'm seeing something.
Yeah, that's my screen, and that is the file. Everybody should have this addendum. We just sent it out via email. It's page 120 of the document we sent out over lunch called Addendum. And then we'd all have the file that Councilmember Kazar is going to speak to. Doesn't seem like we're going to be able to get this worked out.
That's okay, then I'll just narrate this out loud. You can go onto the council message board because I just tried to create a place where there could be both reductions, reallocations, decoupling of departmental responsibilities, and then all other potential items for discussion. In the file that I uploaded, it does have a lot of similarities to what Councilmember Poole just described. And leaves open the, frankly, leaves open a lot of the possibility for us to continue to do the work and make the decisions that Councilmember Flanagan just raised. But it does include not having the cadet classes this coming fiscal year. It pulls $2 million out of the police overtime budget. It reallocates the dollars that are the non-personnel dollars that Councilmember Poole described, you know, the places where there was a surplus in services, things like the license plate readers. And then also defers the purchase of the new records management system. The proposal that I posted does say we should decouple functions from APD. I've listed that in the past around internal affairs, SIU. And, oh, look, there it is now, just sideways. Internal affairs, SIU, and forensics. I've added to that list dispatch, special events, and the support services for the department. When I put in this decoupling, I don't necessarily mean, and I think maybe we can include direction to the manager, that come October 1st, it's all done. The idea would be this decoupling needs to happen in a smooth transition, but during the fiscal year, because it is a planning document for the year. So we would want these things to get separated this year. For victim services, I've included in my document a list of sort of conditions before there is a change there that have been raised by a lot of the people that work in that space. And that potentially might mean elevating victim services to reporting to the chief or having a report to an assistant city manager separately. And here we are. And so you can see that now, what I talked about at first is these immediate reallocations. Next, I'm talking here about the decoupling that could happen over the course of the fiscal year. And then this third set here that says other potential reallocations, reductions or decoupling, or other areas that we can discuss. Because the two that I just described add up to about $93 million. And I think that it is achievable for us to make a $100 million or more change to the police budget. And so those two encompass $93 million. There, I've listed another area of $28 million for discussion for us to sort through some of those, some of those other items, because this is not meant to be like a finalized document. It's really just to move the discussion along. That leaves about just under $22 million for immediate reallocation to other community supports that many of y'all have been leading on on the message board. So I've tried to sort of create a framework of these. This proposal could fully fund the EMS ask, given COVID. I know that Councilmember Alter and Ellis and Poole and lots of other people have posted about this. This actually funds a little bit more than what I think Councilmember Alter may have posted as we were trying to get there, if it's, if we can have $5 million in recurring funds and if we can find just over a million in the COVID for one-time costs. This also includes the $2 million for family violence shelter and protection on an ongoing basis. This funds half of the permanent supportive housing in the two-year plan that was just presented to us this morning. So I think it would be really important to try to cover half of that ground this year so we can cover the other half next year. It includes the mental health response and CHPs that I know Councilmember Kitchen just posted. And I think there was another post from Councilmember Poole doing the same. This adds $1 million to victim services. We've been talking about that for a long time and how important. It's $3 million for violence prevention. That would be potentially forming an office of violence prevention. We have to have violence prevention programs within APH so it could do that work on guns, sex worker support, other forms of harm reduction. We've had presentations in Public Safety Committee about substance use continuum of care. I know this is an area of particular interest where Mayor Protem Garza has raised this issue. I know that it will be a part of her work going forward next year. Councilmember Harper-Madison posted about addressing recidivism, keeping folks out of the jails and taking care of them. I think that'd be an important way, thing. The Mayor Protem listed food access, so this would fund that program fully. I know Councilmember Ellis and others have talked about parks and youth programming. This includes $400,000 for that. Several of you have posted about the abortion access item, so this is $250,000 there. And then there's still a million and a half for other COVID response we may need. I've seen that Councilmember Harper-Madison posted about workforce development for Austin Public Health, just further staffing up. It leaves a million five there. Then the column just to the right of that is actually, this proposal makes it so that we have even more funds available for these programs in the next budget year, because some of those cadets have some savings this year and even more next year. So this allows for us to continue to grow our investments in things. And here I've written that into PSH, Mental Health, Victim Services, and Violence Prevention. So I just wanted to lay that out for everyone, because I know each of you have been working really hard on these proposals. I really appreciate Councilmember Flanagan and his restructuring stuff, and I think this works in tandem with that. But I just wanted to provide a starting point of what $93 million looks like, looking at all of the hard work the council has done, and leaving some options on the table for us to get to that hundred.
Okay, thank you. You return the screen.
Thank you to everybody for trying so hard to get that up.
Anyone else want to lay out the proposal? Councilmember Harper-Madison?
All right, thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, so, and you'll see, this will be familiar to you. It's on the message board as well, but for the general public. I've heard loud and clear that our community's call is for transformative change to the way we as a municipality approach public safety. Everything I've seen so far indicates to me that this council is prepared to do the necessary work. Certain that each of you also recognizes that we will neither realize nor sustain, and I want to put some emphasis on the word sustain, because if we're talking about transformative change, we want it to be perpetual, nor sustain last change without putting in the time, resources, and careful deliberation required. My staff and I continue to work around the clock with community members, staff. My staff and I continue to work around the clock with community members, staff and the budget office to finalize amendments. But today, I'd like to lay out a few of the items that I intend to bring forward during next week's budget deliberations. In addition to the city manager's $11.3 million proposed change to the FY21 APD budget prompted by the resolution my office brought forward on June 11th, we also need to fund, and as Councilmember Qasar has pointed a few of these out, but the mental health intervention proposal from the Meadows Foundation, priority items for EMS to increase its capacity, long, long overdue repairs to East Austin Recreation Facilities, including the Millennium Youth Entertainment Complex, Juneteenth as a city holiday, the renaming of city assets linked to the Confederacy and/or white supremacy, increased funding for Austin Public Health, including expanded EPI response teams, workforce development, increased access to healthy foods and food deserts, and increased investments in recidivism reduction initiatives and reentry support solutions. This year's accelerated budget process has really left us with little time to do the work that's necessary to create lasting change in how our city addresses public safety. I recommend that council only authorizes half of the proposed APD budget in order to allow our deputy city manager and police monitor the time they need to properly evaluate and recommend timelines and logistics for an APD transition budget. This will ensure that council is in a position to vote on those items prior to or as a part of mid-year budget authorization in six months. The cadet class evaluation process and the creation of new curriculum is still ongoing and unlikely to be completed in time for a November class, in which case I recommend delaying the November cadet class and reallocating 6.43245 million in savings to go to fund the above proposed items.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kitchen?
I appreciate all the work that everyone has been involved in and everything that you all have put on the council message board. So, and I'm, so I'm not going to repeat all of that. I'll put a message board post shortly because I support many of these things that you all are proposing. So I just want to highlight a few things right now. The, the mental health, the first response to mental health calls and mental health diversion that we have included at a doubling rate in the proposed budget. And then we also have a budget writer to add an additional seven community health paramedics that will support that program as well as working with a response for people to help people who are experiencing homelessness. I also want to call your attention to this budget writer because, on the mental health diversion initiative, because it, it lays out a number of steps that need to occur in order to actually fully implement this program. So the funding alone will not get us to the place that we need to be in terms of implementing this program. So it lays out what those steps are, including what's really important in terms of working with engaging a project manager who will take the steps that are outlined in here, working across the different entities that support this program in order to accomplish our goals. I also speak to, in this list of items, a process for making sure we regularly track and report to council our progress towards achieving the goals and any additional resources that might be needed. And at this point, you know, we're doubling plus adding an additional seven CHPs, but we also acknowledge that increased staffing might be needed in the future. And so we acknowledge in here that that needs to be tied back to data and we need to have that data provided to us on a regular basis so we can both understand how we're reaching those goals as well as as any additional resources that are needed. Another thing that's, that I think is critical in here is the stating of the goal that we've all talked about. And that is working towards our goal of 100% of calls involving mental health being diverted to a clinician whenever possible. So, or not whenever possible unless they, unless they involve an immediate threat to public safety. So all of that is laid out in here. And this is by way of putting, putting forth the council's goals and putting forth a structure and a process to, to report back to us so that we can see that we're making progress and also to put in place the infrastructure from a, from a project management perspective to make sure this, this help, this happens. So I wanted to just bring that to y'all's attention. And then there's the related budget writer that speaks to the additional community health paramedics. And I want to also just acknowledge the, the work of our cosponsors, you know, Councilmember Poole, Councilmember Qasar, Councilmember Harper Madison, Councilmember Alter. But I, but I also just want to emphasize this is really the work of the whole council. I think everyone has been over, everyone has, has been very focused on mental health diversion. And so everybody really has weighed in and supported this effort. So the other thing I would like to mention is Councilmember Qasar, I really appreciate you bringing attention to the PSH, the needs for PSH and the for homeless individuals. I am probably going to suggest, and I'll talk with you about this and put it on the message board, that, that we need to add the total amount for all of the items that were recommended to us by the consultants and that we looked at this morning. And those might be items that will be added to your second year budget. I appreciate you looking at two years of budget so we can talk about that. But I view those recommendations from this morning regarding our, our, you know, our efforts around reaching effective zero for homelessness to be the highest, one of our very, very, very highest priorities. And so I think we need to set a path for how we're going to get there. And I appreciate the consultants laying that out. What the consultants gave us is what they call the modest investment. So I, I would like for us to commit to at least that modest investment. Because working with the community, we're actually going to need more than that and in order to actually achieve our goal of effective zero homelessness. So, and then finally, I would just say, I, I, I really appreciate all the efforts that everyone has made in the discussion that we're having about, about the opportunity that is in front of us for transformative change, the necessity to understand that there are things that we can do right now, today, and what we vote next week. And there is the path that we need to set. It's a clear path, clearly understandable for the public that both sets a timeline for during the year where we can understand when we will be amendments and also makes it very clear to the public on how they can engage and how their voices will be heard. So we talked about this some last week. I appreciate the efforts that, that our staff is taking to set up that process for engagement. And I think as part of, as part of the direction that we provide next week and the votes that we make next week, we also need to have that, that timeline and that clarity. And we need to understand also from, you know, from our staff, the timeline that they're setting out for this process of working with the community. And with that said, I, I really appreciate all the work that everyone else has been talking about. And we'll post some additional thoughts of my own on the council message board about supporting all these various items. I think that they all represent the kinds of transformation that we need to make in our community.
Okay, thank you. Alex, someone want to speak next? Yes, Councilmember Taria. You're muted.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Yeah, you know, we, I agree with my colleague, Anne Kitchen, you know, are the biggest problems out there and the, on the streets are the mental health illness that a lot of these people are experiencing. You know, years ago, the state, you know, didn't, wasn't responsible, gave up their responsibility of taking care of these people that they put out in the streets and with the promise of the resources that they were going to give to the cities. And they never did. And now we have a crisis going on in our city. And we really need to look at and, and really focus a lot of that funding on, on mental health. You know, that's, that's very important to me besides housing. You know, that's always been a big problem. So I also want to thank the colleague, my colleagues for all the work that they have done. You know, this is very, very, very tough decisions that we're making. And so I just want to thank y'all.
Alex? Yes, Councilmember Ellis?
I really appreciate these detailed proposals being, being put out. I'm still reviewing all of the information put forth in them because they are quite extensive and that's really appreciated. And I also want to thank the Public Safety Committee members for inviting us to be a part of those conversations. I know oftentimes we may work on our, our own topics and work in our own silos as subquorums to be able to do this good work. And the information that I'm seeing of the council members who have posted very specific detailed information about what cuts can be made out of the APD department, what is possibly more appropriate for another department to be responding to, and what might need further council action in the form of items from council and resolutions to make sure that we've got the appropriate programming and the appropriate personnel working on these big issues. So I'm still combing through them, but they, they all sound like really good bits of information for us to start from. And I think they set us up to be in a good place when we get through budget to have realigned some of our intentions to make sure that we have the health and safety standards for our citizens that, that we so desperately need right now. So I appreciate these conversations and will start working through my own post about the information y'all have put together and where I think things are looking good and what other suggestions we might be able to work on if there's anything to further round out this reimagining and reprogramming of how, how we do policing in Austin.
I really like a lot of the proposals that are being, that are being made. And what I like about them is the, the move to thinking outside of the box, the move to be willing to explore new avenues and new ideas, recognizing that our highest priority as a council and a government is to keep the community safe. And I think we need to look at these proposals through that lens. I personally believe that, that many of these proposals will further public safety and make our city a safer, a safer place. Some of the ideas that people are presenting now are new and, and some of them are things that, that we have as a community examined and talked about for, for a long time. And I think it's, I think it now is, is the moment for these things to, to come to a head and for us to, to, to start making, making decisions. I agree with Councilmember Harper Madison when she says that if we're going to make real sustainable and lasting change, that we have to put in the work associated to, to make sure that we're doing the things that are right and we're deliberate and thoughtful about the things that we do. I also agree with, with everyone that it's important for us to, to recognize that, that this process needs to happen fast and it needs to begin now. So I look at some of the proposals and some of them make intuitive sense to me. Things like moving the forensic lab and creating a different structure for that has been something that we've been working on now for the last couple of years. And I understand we're just about to get back a report that presents three different ways that that could happen after a consultant's been working on that for some time. And I'm anxious to see those and, and to, and to, and to understand how that works. There are other things I know that, that are important to me that, that I think the community wants to see happening yesterday and not just today. And a lot of those center around things like the, the mental health work that we've all been working on and initiated a year ago. Because it just seems that, that, that so many of the issues and challenges we have follow from, from that. And I'm not sure we've ever had the right answer for, for how to intervene on, I believe we have not had the right answer on how to intervene with, with mental health issues. And I think there's a lot to be said for the fact that, that, that in, in many, if not most situations, a mental health professional is probably the person that needs to, to really intervene there. And we've, we've given too much of that responsibility to our, to our, to our police officers to do. Because police is not the way that we should be intersecting as a community with poverty. Or, and then our police should not be our, our community's social workers. What I am uncertain about is, is how we get from here to there. And what I am uncertain about is some of the ideas that have been suggested that have not been, or I have not seen the vetting associated with them. So it's hard for me, as I sit here now, to, to be able to state what all of the pros and what all of the cons might, might be on some of the proposals. I like the process that the deputy city manager laid out when she was talking about the process she would follow and the kinds of things that she was looking at. And, and I'd want to make sure that, that if not already decided, her portfolio includes all of the ideas that anyone is suggesting to, to be able to that, to give us thoughts and, and ideas and recommendations on what we should do. What I don't know is, is how best to give that process the time to be able to do that work without signaling in any way that we're not serious about actually getting this stuff done. I hear Councilmember Harper Madison suggest that we only fund the budget for part of the year, requiring the council to come back in essence in a renewed budget process. And, and I, you know, I think that makes sense to me to do. There is no default then that lets city government just continue operating without having to, to come back and actually confront some of these ideas and suggestions. So that kind of thing coupled with a calendar and, and the liberty dates makes sense to me. If there are topics that we're being asked to consider that we don't know whether they're the right ones to do, or we don't know how it is that, even if it's the right thing to do, how we transition to go from, from, from here to there. I like the work that, that several colleagues have done to create kind of different kinds of buckets with different kinds of things. That kind of approach makes sense to me because they're not all the same, they're not all similar. But I think that we're presented right now with an incredible opportunity to fundamentally change how we think and approach public safety in the city. And I'm really anxious and eager to, to, to be part of that. What would be helpful for me, manager, in this session is to hear from you and your staff as to the ideas that have been suggested for, for immediate action so that you can talk to us about what you see being the ramifications of those things. First, so that is collectively, we can think about them and discuss them and explore them as part of our budget process. But also because that, that might be informative or instructive with respect to which, which one of the different buckets, different ideas or concepts should be placed. You've had the same information we've had with the postings that colleagues have done. I assume that you or someone on your staff is ready to respond to them to give us thoughts or insight to the fullest extent you can. I know that we're all working fast, you know, I think that, you know, we've only had, you know, as you were preparing the budget, probably a week or two to be able to react to this sea change that we're involved in now. And it is a sea change. And, and, but with that, I would still like to know, we've all known these are the proposals. And I would like to hear your assessment of those. When, when, after, I think we gave my colleagues a chance to speak first if they want to on their thoughts. So everyone who has a chance can do that. But then I would really like to, to hear your assessment. But then I would really like to to hear your assessment of which buckets or or how we would in fact start moving in in this kind of conversation. Does anyone want to say anything before we do that? Council member Alter?
Thank you. Like all of our colleagues here, I'm excited about the opportunity we have to reimagine public safety. This is a historic opportunity and we will be judged by how we seize it. My goal is to sure ensure that everyone in Austin feels safe and to make sure that we're delivering the right service to meet the right challenge. And for me, this goes beyond just what's going on with our police department. And I hope as this conversation evolves, we can be having that broader conversation. Because that's part of the lens that I've been looking at, I have focused a little bit more on the investment side and the solution side. So this exercise is not only about how we cut APD, and there's been a lot of proposals about where else we might put that money. So some of the investments that I think that will lead to greater safety for everyone that I've put out there, and I would guess I have an opportunity a little later to speak more specifically to them, so I'll just mention them now, are the Office of Violence Prevention, the Chief Medical Officer, the EMS COVID Response Elements, the CHPs for Mental Health and Almost Response, and then also is moving in a direction for Victim Services, which I think council member Kassar highlighted for the first time here. I'm also, you know, as I've been looking at the APD budget, been been pretty focused on victim services and trying to understand what our opportunities were there. And I think I've come to a similar place as Mr. Kassar with, you know, there's some really serious caveats that have to be in place for it to make sense to move that. I'm totally willing to have the conversation, but we need to make sure that the end result is going to best serve the victims in the process. And I agree that it needs additional resources. Appreciate council member Harper Madison bringing up the notion of six months budget. When we introduced the possibility for zero-based budget and outcome-based budget when we passed item 96 on my amendment, I floated that as well. And I think that I think that's an important addendum to the important process that the deputy city manager has been laying out. We have to have some something at the end of that where we have a clear accountability and a clear mechanism in place that we don't just keep having business as usual. This cannot be like when we did the Development Services delays on those positions that it just never came back to council. We have to, you know, we have to set it up so that it absolutely has to come back to council if there are decisions. Going back to the zero-based budgeting and the outcomes-based budgeting, I think that all of these are great ideas. I think that what is been sort of in the air but not defined yet is what do we actually mean about the outcome that we want? I don't know if it's enough to say that we want everyone to feel safe, to have that clarity of our goal so that we can chart where we're going. And if we want to do a zero-based budgeting exercise, it has to be combined with the outcomes or we're likely to get the same budget within APD that we already have. So I'm trying to think through if there are ways to incorporate that combination of that six-month process with zero-based budgeting and outcomes-based budgeting. With respect to the specific proposals, like the mayor suggested, I think there's a number of things where it makes sense to move forward with decoupling, such as forensics, the 911 call and the dispatch, and there's other ones where I still have some questions that I'm working to get answered at an appropriate time. I do have several questions to understand some of the numbers that are in here on overtime and one-time and ongoing and how 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 just sort of the logistics on a very nitty-gritty level are are playing out across some of these proposals. So when we have an opportunity, I would appreciate being able to ask some of those questions of my colleagues or or of staff.
Mayor Protem Garza.
Thanks, mayor. I don't have much to add to all the great comments that everybody has made, so I don't want to duplicate any of the comments in this as we are in this important time of trying to imagine public safety. I I guess I just would want to touch on how 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 difficult this conversation has been and but how important it is and how we really do have to make some drastic changes. And I know that, you know, I know our police officers feel, you know, under attack and 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 feel unappreciated. I I I want to just say that we have made drastic changes to our departments before for efficiency reasons and for cost-saving reasons. And some examples are, you know, creating a code department. We realized that it wasn't the most efficient thing to send a police officer to certain kinds of calls. It's my understanding police officers used to respond to stray dog calls too, and we realized that that wasn't the most efficient thing to be doing with our police officers. So for me, this is this is really just, you know, we've done it for efficiency and we've done it for cost savings. And and now the community is demanding to do it for for people's lives, for life-saving reasons, and for people throughout our city to feel safe and to feel comfortable and for us not to see reports of huge racial disparities on depending on what part of town you live in, you will get pulled over more, especially if your skin is brown or black. And so, you know, I'm I'm I I'm excited to see where this goes. I'm nervous about a a half year because I feel that we have we have given kind of deadlines for things before and then we get to the deadline and 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 many times get asked for an extension of that deadline. And, you know, if you would have, it it's so interesting, when I think of my first budget on this council and 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 really making a transformational investment in public health and how hard that was and hearing from former council members that that was one of the great successes of 10-1 already, that that could have never happened under, you know, the at-large council, that we'd made this incredible investment in public health. Think of that budget, to think of the, I think it was a second budget where I asked for 1% from APD, Fire and EMS to go to public health and to think about where we are now. I, you know, I, for so many reasons, I know many of us would have never imagined being in the position that, you know, in a pandemic, in important uprisings right now. But, you know, it's 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 good to be here and we have to have these hard conversations. And there's going to be some incredibly tough choices and some growing pains from that. But we've been through it before. We've been through it before with changing our departments and, you know, taking the police, taking Parks Police over. We've done it before. This isn't something new. And I know that we can get through it as we continue to have these these important conversations. You know, for me, it's just it's reforming what we used to traditionally think was public safety. And study after study shows, we heard it in the homeless conversation this morning, and all these policy areas overlap, that it's not the best helping people that need help the most, we're not doing it the right way and we need to think of a better way to do it. So I just wanted to add those comments as we continue to have these discussions.
Thank you. Alex? Manager, do you want to respond to the proposals?
Sure.
Help us understand them better.
Mayor, council, just really appreciate this conversation that we're having today. It's incredibly important. And as I mentioned, when I presented the proposed budget on July 13th, this is the most challenging budget that I have had the chance to put together with our incredible budget staff, but it is going to be one of the most challenging to get it through adoption just because of, for the most part, we are in one of the biggest economic recessions that our generation has seen. And we are dealing with the impact of that on our revenues, how we're able to project in the future. And so we presented a budget that doesn't lay off any of our city employees, that continues our services as we've had them in the past, but it allows us to confront the two biggest crises that our that our community is facing. The the pandemic that our our health crisis is is facing, and then obviously the need to reimagine our public safety infrastructure to align with the needs of our community. I'm going to ask our deputy city manager, Nurya Rivera Vandermine, just to highlight a few of the next steps on the process that she outlined that was laid out in the June 17th memo, and then we we talked about more in-depth last week. It's going to be critical that, as many of you mentioned, that this is something that takes place over time and that we have those important discussions with the community so we can understand exactly how we are all defining what public safety looks like in the future for Austin. And then many of the additional investments that we're contemplating in some of the proposals that are put forward on the message board, we need to make sure that because of the action that was taken last Thursday in capping the property tax increase at three and a half percent, any investments need to be reallocated from our current budget. And so most of the larger investments that would be looked at is seen from a savings of canceling future cadet classes. And so after Nurya speaks, I'm going to ask our police chief to talk a little bit about the impact of what that means to delay or cancel future cadet classes on their department. So I'll first turn it over to our deputy city manager.
Thank you, manager, and thank you, mayor and council, for the opportunity. As we think about the work, I want to reiterate both what I've heard about your sense of urgency, community sense of urgency, and and frankly, even as we have met with staff and our CMO leadership team, and that includes the chief and that includes ACM Ariano along with Chris Shorter, ACM Chris Shorter, Farah Muskadon and Brian Oakes from Equity Office, that we, I think, also have a sense of urgency to continue to move forward some of the transformational change. I also appreciate hearing and seeing some of the proposals that they've come out. I really do think that many of them align with the conversations we've been having, both internally and with our community advocates and community members. There have been others that are new and we're excited to sort of look through them and see how does that fit into what we're doing. So really excited about this work as that moves forward. To the manager's point, we have thought really strongly about this needing to be done in concert, in close alignment with community. We don't believe that sustainable change and transformational change will necessarily happen without community doing this work with us. And so we have finished those initial conversations with our community advocates. Tomorrow at our internal CMO leadership meeting on reimagining, we'll be setting out that convening process to bring that together and really moving forward to take all of the proposals we're hearing from and waiting to see what is approved or what is voted on in the future, but hoping that that community, City Community Task Force can look at them and together create a work plan and a timeline. To your point about calendaring, we very much want to move this work quickly and we want to come forward to council and the mayor as soon as possible to figure out what the next steps are. In our thoughts about what this work looks forward, there are also some administrative moves that we can start to think about today. And so to the point of many of the conversations we've had and some of the proposals, things like the forensics lab, things like the emergency call center, things like those internal administrative management services are some of the the things that we have thought that we can move quickly. I'll say that I know that finance has put in a great deal of time on these recommendations and we will continue to rely on finance as we move forward. And HRD is liberating some of their staff to really just work with us forward as we do this. I know the manager has asked many of us, including myself, to liberate our own timetable so that this can be our priority as we move forward. So we're not just moving forward the internal work, but then with the City Community Task Force really looking at prioritizing some of the jobs. So I hope that we will come to you in the fall with not just an update, but hopefully potentially budget amendments. That is how quickly and how seriously we are moving forward. But we want to really do that and prioritize with community. And so hope to let you know what that calendar is once we get that commitment and that work plan assessed with the City Community Task Force in place. The other thing I heard about, and I wanted to share about the process, was that we also know that that this needs to be very transparent, that you need to not just be council member, I mean, you need to not just have us come to you, but community also wants to see our progress, right? And so there is a team that is looking and to figure out how do we put those dashboards and those progress reports and all the results of what we're doing up transparently so that everybody can see what we're doing. And we anticipate that coming into view before the end of this month. And hopefully, we can give you a progress report on where that is. But we take all of this very seriously. We are excited, I believe, in moving forward. We believe that not only the input from community will help us, but we will also be focusing and figuring out ways that we hear from PD staff. There is a lot of great insight from PD staff. There's also a lot of great insight from the folks that potentially could inherit or could enlarge their current scope of work, whether that is EMS or health or parks or other places in the city. And we need to make sure that we understand what the ramifications are. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say too, that for some of those items that have been mentioned, we have a group and we've got a great partner in law to see if there are any statutaries or legal barriers to some of the changes we want to see, that we can identify those quickly and then that we can move forward with proposals to get those out of our way. So unless there are questions, I'm happy to stand and and certainly continue to have them throughout the course of this session.
Mayor is muted, but it looks like council member Kitchen had a question.
Is this the time for questions?
And that's what I was pausing on. I want the manager to to finish answering the question.
Okay.
If you would, manager, what are the ramifications? There are some things that are being proposed to be cut now. You you touched on one of them, the cadet class, but there are also some suggestions for immediate recovery on other things too, overtime, other things too. And I'd like to hear your your you and your staff's thought on all those things.
Great. So thank you. Thank you, Nurya, deputy city manager. And and as I mentioned, many of the additional savings that have been proposed are coming from canceling or delaying future cadet classes. And so I'm going to ask the chief to just describe what that impact would be on our staffing levels and the calls for service. Chief?
Absolutely. Good afternoon, mayor, council. If we were to follow through with some of these proposals with the delaying of cadet classes, I do believe this really represents one of the greatest threats to the safety to our community. Because what we would see if we canceled these cadet classes, we would see vacancy levels reach by January of 2022, we could expect to see the vacancy levels in this department reach a level to where our staffing was that of what it was back in 2012, back when we were a city of 860,000 people. So if you could imagine, we've added basically a city of Round Rock to our population, and that would be like leaving a city of Round Rock without any police officers. And so the staffing implications of not moving forward with hiring would be significant on many fronts. We already do not meet our goals for response times in our priority zero, priority one calls, which is a critical performance measure for us. We know that we are experiencing the same increases in crime here locally that we're seeing nationally, with our homicide rate up over 70% this year to date, aggravated assaults are up 14%, robberies up 16%. And I'm sure everyone just saw the Wall Street Journal post that showed that of the 15 most populated cities, our percentage increase in homicides here in Austin is the highest. So we're experiencing what we're experiencing around the country and we need to have officers on the street to respond to the calls so that we can ensure the public safety with adequate response. Now, I'll take the steps necessary to ensure we have officers on the street, but that will come at the expense of other services within the department. We will have to transfer people out of divisions that are also very critical to operations right now, critical to serving our community. So that is a that is a very key point. The other issue that will impact us if we see our staffing levels drop significantly will be the need to have officers work backfilled, have officers fill in for those vacant positions. Similar to how a fire truck operates with mandatory four firefighter staffing, a police shift that is shift that is staffed with 12 officers needs 12 officers. That's why we put 12 there. So we could expect to see a much greater need for officers on overtime, and that will impact officers' health and wellness the more we continue to demand of them to fill these positions that will remain vacant long term. And that could have impacts on our performance as well. So that would be concerning, and it would also have budgetary impacts as far as the need for overtime. So while we absolutely recognize the need and look forward to the continued work we're doing with our cadet training program and in-service training program, we've brought in outside consultants, we've created a position for a civilian PhD to help us in those areas. We're doing a lot, but I do not believe that slowing down the cadet classes is in the best interest of our community or the safety of our community.
I know people have their, their hands raised. Manager, I don't know, there were other proposals that were also mentioned in terms of cutting overtime and the like. I don't know if you want to address those. There's a laundry list of things that were suggested.
Sure. Chief, and then maybe actually have Ed Vanino talk about the impact of cutting overtime and how that impacts other parts of our budget. But chief, do you want to speak to that issue as well?
And to that, and so the colleagues don't have to continue raising their hand when we're done with this, I'm going to recognize Councilmember Flanagan, the Councilmember Garza, and the Councilmember Kitchen, and Councilmember Harper-Madison. And everyone will also get a chance. Chief?
Okay. So looking at some of the proposed cuts, I've kind of, I think I've spoken enough about staffing, and I'll move on from that. Overtime, I know Ed will talk about operational impacts to the overall budget. I'll just talk about from the operation side of the house, that our overtime budget, you know, depending upon whether you include transfers and grants of roughly 11.5 million, and that is a budget that, you know, it gets tasked much more greatly when our vacancy levels go higher. So that is something that oftentimes, at the end of the year, will be offsetting savings in other categories with overages in our overtime. So I would be very concerned about the levels of service that we would get if we were to make such significant cuts to our overtime budget, a budget that we really have not seen any notable increases to in many, many years, even though officer salaries have gone up and the dollars don't go as far. And so that would impact our ability to conduct special initiatives that are really geared towards a specific crime trend, or just the day-to-day demands for overtime, such as officers receiving late calls, having to stay to finish up paperwork for maybe, maybe an arrest or a late call that they took. So overtime is something that is, is significant. I know cell phones have been mentioned. Cell phones are an integral part of the officer's performance in that they link to our body worn cameras, and the officers actually use those cell phones to classify all of their body worn camera videos while they're out on the street. So again, that's not a luxury, it's actually something that enhances our performance and makes us more efficient as we go, as we go through the workday for our officers. Asset forfeiture funds are very tightly controlled by the, by the federal government with a lot of strict rules, and so we, we abide by those. So that's not necessarily something that could be retasked to other uses. There's very strict rules on that. We look at our budgets for, I know explosives comes up fairly regularly, and although it is a, a large line item, we definitely want our officers, when they get involved in situations that are low frequency but high risk, to be as best trained as possible. So we need to have the ammunition possible for them to train, and that's why we have that. Looking at the mounted patrol, that unit is critical to us as a police department. In crowd control, we use them regularly, whether it be on Sixth Street or here in, in recent protest activities as well. They are very good at what they do. Many police departments utilize them, and it is definitely a force multiplier that allows us, again, to be more effective in what we do. So that is a critical unit for us as a police department. Looking at units to realign, I think that there, there are some things there that make sense, and I know the deputy city manager is leading the efforts that many of us are working on, and we stand ready to, to participate in moving functions to other areas where maybe there's a natural nexus to where it fits better there, or there's some efficiencies built in because there are redundant functions here at the department and other city entities. And I think that there are areas that we can look at within many of those units that have been proposed to transfer into other areas. And then looking at the proposal to break us down into five different, basically, departments, you know, it's, it's a discussion that we could have as a city. I think everyone realizes we used to have multiple police departments in the city when we had the PSEM group with the airport police, the city marshals, and the park police. And there were reasons we went through consolidation and brought everybody under one umbrella as the Austin Police Department. And so if we want to, you know, reimagine that and look at going back to maybe some structures we used to have in the past, I think that we could engage in those discussions. But we should kind of look at why we did what we did in the first place as we, as we move forward. So that's probably hitting my thoughts on, on my concerns with some of the proposals and then some areas that I do think are, are appropriate for us to look at and reimagine. I look forward too, to the day when we have got mental health services available in our community such that it's not a police officer that's responding to those calls unless there is a threat of violence, and, and we have to go, because we too recognize that we're not the best trained or equipped, we're just simply the only ones out there. So please know that we look forward to this reimagining process in those areas where we can do better. But I, I get, I get concerned when it's, let's cut 100 million just so we can say we cut 100 million. I think that we've just got to be very thoughtful in how we approach this, and I do see it as my role to, to inform you and mayor, as you just asked, of the concerns that I would have with some of these items being considered. So thank you for giving me that opportunity, and thank you, manager, for, for giving me that time.
And I'll just repeat the direction that I gave to the, the CMO group led by our deputy city manager, that no ideas are going to be off the table here, that we're going to look at all aspects of how we think about our public safety infrastructure and through the community task force, they will be looking thoughtfully at each one of these areas that we're discussing, including staffing levels. So I think that's going to be an important discussion that our community has in the future. Before I pass it back to, to you, mayor and council, just, Ed Vanino, are you able to just describe a little bit of how you look at the overtime budget and if there were cuts to that, how that might impact other areas within the police department?
Well, I can, I could certainly put some numbers out there, city manager. Chief Manley kind of talked about the operational concerns of cutting the overtime budget, you know, but one area that, that if you look at the different proposals being discussed, both from the council and from the community, there's one category that I would put as short-term things, things that we could actually do this budget, which relate to the cadet class, delaying those cadet classes. That results in more vacancies, so that would be more vacant positions that could be eliminated. And then the overtime budget. So we have estimated, there's a budget question response on this, if we were to delay all the cadet classes next year, there's scheduled to be three, they typically run every four months, so one in November, one in March, and I believe one in June or July is the schedule for the cadet classes next year. If we were to delay all those, our estimates are that there'd be another 80 positions that, that would be vacant, that could be reduced from the police department's budget, and the combined savings of all that would be $10 million this year. That's something that could be done budgetarily. I would point out that about 5 million of that comes from delaying the cadet classes. So that would be one time, right? When we get to fiscal year 21, if we're going to, or when we get to fiscal year 22, if we're going to start running cadet classes, again, that $5 million of savings from not doing the cadet classes this year would need to be put back into the police department's budget. So Councilmember Kazar mentioned that in addition to that, if we don't run any of the cadet classes next year, that also results in more vacancies throughout the year, that these will be, could be cut from the budget in fiscal year 22. And he's correct in that, and we estimate that at another $9 million of savings in fiscal year 22. So there are substantial amounts of savings, clearly consequences, like chief said, if we did that, we would be back to staffing levels of roughly where we were in 2012, eight years ago. But, you know, dollars-wise, say about $10 million of savings this year and another $9 million in fiscal year 2022. In regards to overtime, there's different categories. So a total overtime budget of a little more than $11 million, some of that's reimbursed, so it doesn't really make sense to cut reimbursed overtime. But non-reimbursed sworn overtime is right about $8.5 million. One and a half million of that was added by council just a few years ago to, to run to staff South by Southwest annually. So a million and a half of that overtime budget is for that. About another 500,000 is for various other special events, and then 6.3 million is for patrol and investigations, court time, holdovers for ongoing calls. So there's certain things that officers are paid overtime for that doesn't seem like they would be able to go away, you know? When somebody's on a call and they need to be held over because the call's still going on, that's an overtime situation. And also, as chief said, as the vacancies creep up, there's a greater need to backfill those vacancies to ensure there's enough officers on the, on the, on the street. But I kind of wanted to put some of those numbers out there to provide some context for some of the reductions that are being discussed and the savings that could feasibly happen still in this budget cycle. Maybe just kind of wrap up, there are, there are other proposals that I would kind of categorize more like midterm, things to me that would be hard for us to really figure out to do this budget cycle still. These would be the things that we would want to come back to council mid-year and do. So the idea is to move various civilian functions outside of the Austin Police Department's chain of command to other areas of the, of the city's operations, like forensics or communications or technology, victim services. Those are pretty quick for us to do budgetarily. There's just questions of where, where do we put them? And are we really ready to make a decision about, for example, the forensics lab? If it's not going to be in Austin Police Department's chain of command, where does it go? Where does it make the most sense to go? And I don't know that staff would have recommendations for council on that in time for budget adoption next week. And then the final category I view as being kind of longer term, very likely, probably not even being able to come back mid-year, maybe, but the various proposals that would civilianize a currently sworn function, so traffic enforcement or parks police, if we want to transition those functions away from being sworn personnel to being a civilianized operation, well, that's a major transition that requires us to start up or to add more parks rangers or to create a civilianized traffic safety group, we'd actually have to get those units stood up, get the, get the positions hired, get the programs defined, and that would just take longer term. But how are I just kind of three categories, short-term things, we can actually still do this budget cycle that results in savings, more of these midterm things that we come back during the year to do, and then, and then just what I view as being longer term. But that was just my perspective on the conversation we've been hearing so far.
Thank you, Ed. We'll turn it back for questions.
Sorry, thank you. Councilmember Flanagan.
Thank you, mayor. I, I kind of don't know what to say. Ed, thank you for laying out the challenges of the proposals in a way that I think is reflective of the, the machinery that has to get built or shifted in order to accomplish Spencer, I, I don't know how to interpret when you have a department head quoting statistics with fear mongering language to this council when we are asking for legitimate feedback on a budget proposal. We've all read the Wall Street Journal article. I have seen members of that department share photoshopped versions where they cut out the part of the chart that showed we are 14th out of 15 of top 10 cities in homicides. They cut that part out, and they only showed the part that was a percentage, and only because we are one of the safest cities in America does that percentage seem artificially high. And I have yet to hear an analysis from staff on the pandemic's impact on crime, because it wasn't just Austin that is facing a problem. Every major city with leadership of all different political positions, including cities that have increased police departments, are seeing those, those crime trends occur. In fact, I had a member of that department who holds a position of leadership send to me an article about the city of San Jose saying that, that that mayor had it right. That mayor had it right because they wanted to add cops right now. When you look at the city of San Jose, they have approximately the same population as Austin, they have lower crime than Austin, and half the number of police, half, half. The, the proposals we're deliberating right now are modest. They are, they are modest. We're talking about the, the, the difference between, between 1800 and 1850, like we're, we're talking about a scale that is, that is a drop in the bucket, certainly a drop in the bucket to what the community is asking for. And Spencer, I beg you to give us department heads that are wanting to partner with this council to do the work, because I am tired of dealing with department heads who fight the council. And at some point, it sounds like those are your words, which is why I'm not addressing the chief in this conversation, because I am now left to believe that this is what you are directing him to say. As far as the proposals are concerned, I, I, I want to dig into the stuff that Ed is talking about, and I think some of that we can probably dig into on Thursday if we fail to get to all the stuff we want to get to today, because I know there are parks and EMS proposals to talk about, and, and I'm very interested in the EMS proposals especially. And then there are kind of complications with line items and vacancy savings and all those things. And so there may be opportunities to dig into some of the bigger details then. I, I do have some concerns about cadet classes in calendar year 21. I think, I think it's clear that the training review and the materials review is not going to be complete in time for, to be satisfied with. I'm a little concerned about, you know, deciding now to cancel classes in the following calendar year, in part because there are still jobs that we need sworn officers to do based on the way state law is written, and, and I want to get into a place where we're, we're, we're not, we're not leaving only the, the officers who are least open to culture shift are the ones remaining. I, I like, I think there's a value in, once we get to a place where the, the training is good, there's a lot of value in bringing in new cadets in that training. And so I don't know that I'm ready to call it, to, to call it for calendar year 21. I, I'm definitely ready to call it on November. And so I think some of the more detailed stuff, Ed, I'm looking forward to seeing the budget staff give us some, some further details and deliberations for Thursday.
Mayor Pro Tim Garza.
Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm really trying to stay positive and hopeful about, and this is, these comments are for Spencer, city manager. I'm really trying to stay positive and hopeful about this process, knowing how hard it is, knowing how difficult this has been for our community, you know, being on edge as the weekend approach and hearing all kinds of propaganda, frankly, about what was expected because of sources and hearing that, you know, protesters were coming in on buses. The only people I saw coming off of buses were police officers this weekend. And in trying to stay really hopeful about this, and hearing, you know, Chief Manley say things that are frankly, as, as Councilmember Flanagan put it, fear mongering, is just, it, it's, it's making me lose that hope. The comments that I heard were, if we delay those cadet classes, and this is about that, that in January of 2020, we would face these, this awful, you know, situation. That, that makes so many assumptions. It makes so many assumptions about, oh, that we would keep everything the same. It makes so many assumptions about, we're just doing everything the same, and January 2020 comes, we have a whole year, more than a year till January 2022. Sorry if I didn't say that right, 2022, 2022 is what I heard. We have a long time, and I guess y'all, because I won't be here in, in 2022, 2022. But I just feel like we have, I hope that we can get to some real solutions and to hear things like cutting, you know, that we can't just be cutting 100 million just to cut it. It's never been just to cut it. It's been so, people that have been demanding change and, and, and pleading for communities that are pulled over. that are pulled over more, are shot, are killed, pleading for that. It's not just to cut it, it's to try to get to a place where everyone in our community feels safe. And I'm having a hard time holding on to hope that we can get there, hearing comments like that from our chief. And so I, 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 it's got to be a conversation about, you know, real, real, please tell us the real issues here so we, so we don't feel like we are, you know, fixing this all on our own because we're, we're not the experts, but we all want to get to that same public safety place. And it's getting incredibly hard and making it harder when we just hear just this defensiveness, this, this no, if you do that, you know, the world's going to explode. I just hope we can get to a better place.
Councilmember Kitchen and Councilmember Harper Madison.
I, I want to ask some questions of our deputy city manager that relates to the process that you were talking about. And I think that one thing that would be helpful for me as we, as we go through this, this process, part of what, what, what I see that we're talking about when we're talking about transformation is we are moving functions and, and wanting to connect the, the right function to the right person. That should result in, in the need for less officers. So we have to balance when we, when we move a function, that's going to give us a need for less officers, and then we have to understand the context we're in, which is a growing city. So those are the kinds of, that's the kind of information, factual kind of, well, they're projected, they're not all factual, there's, you know, ideas around them, but those are the kinds of data, information that we need in order to right-size our, our police department in light of the opportunities that we have to move functions to better fit the, you know, to better fit the skill set for who needs to perform that function. And simple way to think about it from my perspective is mental health, not the only, you know, there's much more than we're talking about for that. But to the extent that we are transferring calls to a clinician, and a clinician can take that call or a community health paramedic, at some point, there will be a reduction in police officers' time to put time into that function. And we know there's complexities to that, and it takes a while to figure that out and project it, but at some time there will. And so we are going to have to have data that tells us, so tells us what that is, and that takes, it takes a while to develop. So that's the kind of information that over time we're going to really need to have in order to understand in a year or whenever, what is the right size for our police department? And how much more do we need in terms of cadet classes and when? So I think that I, I feel pretty comfortable that we don't, that we're not ready for our cadet class in November. There's training curriculum changes and other changes that need to occur. So I feel comfortable about that. Whether we're ready in the spring or the summer, I have some grave concerns about we'd be ready in the spring, but I want to hear some conversation about that regardless. So I, my question to you, Deputy City Manager, is, is in the context of that. So I, I, I want to also understand, and I think the community needs to understand some, something more specific, and, and it sounds to me like you're on a path to provide that to us, but I need to understand a better when. In other words, are we going to get, is it in your, it, what would be helpful for me is to have a calendar when we vote on the budget. And that calendar to speak specifically on how we're going to address certain issues, but also to speak to how people can weigh in. How can their voices be heard? There's a lot of questions in the public right now from, regardless of what your perspective is, people are, are, they're interested, they're concerned, some people are scared. And we need to communicate to them specifically. And so I, I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate that. I know you're on a path and been on a path. I'm just encouraging you to give us some more specifics with a timeline. So by the time that we vote next week on our budget, we can vote and say, this is what council is doing, and this is how you, as part of our community, can communicate and be part of this process for those things that we all have decided takes some more time. And that is just not clear to people at this time. And I know you've had to build the process, and that takes some time, and that's okay. But just saying, we got, I, I really feel the pressure, and it's not just pressure, I want, is, and I want to be able to talk to my constituents and let them know what that process is. So I, I know, I styled it as a question, but I don't want to put you on the spot because I don't know if you know the timelines now. But you want to speak to any of that?
Sure, Councilmember. I, I appreciate it. And again, it, it's about this sense of urgency that I think we're all feeling, and certainly I know that you all are feeling it as well. I can share with you that we have a preliminary timeline, right? To the question of a calendar, we internally have created one. I know that folks on our team, and I'll give some credit to Director Musketin in particular, who is part of our CMO leadership team, put together kind of a rough 60, 30 to 60-day timeline. We anticipate convening the group shortly. We have added an invitation to one additional group as per Councilmember Alter's suggestion the last time we spoke. And we hope to have actually three meetings this very month with the task force, provided they are ready to come work with us on a weekly basis because these are volunteer task forces, right? And so as long as they have, and I believe they do because I know how committed community is to moving this forward, we have set up a, a set of sort of milestones for ourselves. That includes monthly memos and updates to council. That includes potentially in September, coming back with some budgetary amendments, if that is appropriate. But I also want to be cognizant that while we have created that internally as staff, our process has all along wanted to make sure that we present that to the community task force and that we are all agreed that that is doable and that we can move forward. And that is one of the reasons that we have not put a confirmed set timeline out there because we really want to do that. But please know that we have a very aggressive timeline that we want to make sure that we vet with our work group and our task force so that we can finalize it and bring that forward together. So I think that should be forthcoming. In terms of the engagement strategies, I believe we will have that to share out as well. We also want to get confirmation, but we had our first listening session with the Quality of Life Commissions, the Public Safety Commissions, and the Joint Inclusion Commissions last week. And from the feedback we received, it was positive. We hope to sort of engage the city of Austin at large with that kind of reimagining scenario based, let us know where are the areas that in these scenarios you would want a sworn officer to respond, or whether, what areas you would not have that, and what ideas do you have? Because I'll, I'll let you know that that first session, and many thanks to the folks that participated in that session, was so useful, was so rich in ideas of community saying, you know, I, I believe that these are other peoples, or these are other organizations, or these are other responses that could come in that scenario. And it is that that we intend to continue forward. We also, from that, will be tweaking that scenario-based discussion and sort of creating these facilitated discussion guides for anyone who wishes to have that. So I know that we want to, again, make sure that we've got some of that set to, I believe it was Councilmember Flanagan's point last week, we're trying not to let perfection be the enemy of good. We want to make sure that we bring things forward as they're able to come forward. But we really wanted to be thoughtful about trying to convene that task force first to get agreement on. Now, we were planning on trying to have that first meeting, I believe, mid-August. And if we can try to get that meeting up beforehand, we will certainly try to do that. But we also want to be cognizant that some of the organizations we spoke with, we have not yet heard, we have not communicated with, to be fair to them, and seen if they are still willing, if they had spoken to their boards, if they had spoken to their other community organizations, so that we know that we're there in order to convene. But that was really mostly what we're waiting for. It is not for lack of the city having sort of thought of what a timeline looks like as much as really wanting to vet that with the folks that we're asking to come on that journey with us.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. That flushes out a bit more for people so that people can understand. And then I, I would just say that I, I hear what my colleagues have said, and I agree, City Manager, that, that it struck me in the same way in terms of talking about the impact of, of not having the cadet classes. I recognize underlying that is that there is a fundamental question that I would like to see informed by data when we get to it, and that is what is the right size for our police department in a growing city, when and after, not when, but after we consider the functions that we can better, better address and better provide public safety in a different setting? So that is a legitimate question that people have, and we all recognize that, but we need to have a conversation about it in a way that's based on data. Because people are afraid, and I have heard from my constituents that are afraid because they don't know what that means. They don't know what it means for our city as a growing city to, to have some number of less officers. And, you know, we all are, what we all are talking about is shifting functions, functions, which makes sense and is more efficient and effective. And, and that, that impacts what we need in our police department. So that's a, that's a, that's a, that's the crux of the matter from my perspective in terms of people's concerns.
Thank you for raising that, Councilmember, because I couldn't agree with you more. And I look forward to that discussion, and it's a critical one as we continue to move forward with this reimagining process.
Councilmember Harper Madison.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to all my colleagues for allowing me the opportunity to, once in a lifetime, not be long-winded because y'all just said everything that I was thinking, and so I don't have to repeat any of it. I actually had my hand up first before the chief started to talk because what I wanted to ask was, as he was about to present the, the implications of not having cadet classes, I was hoping to be able to differentiate the difference between not having the November class, which much like my colleague mentioned, I don't believe is at all a reasonable expectation. But I also would like to continue to explore what, what it would look like to not have 2021 cadet classes. But I would like to know, and this is an Ed Vanino question at this point, because much like my colleagues, the original response to not having cadet classes definitely is a source of frustration, especially as we're talking about, as a community, we're talking about true transformation, and you can't talk about true transformation without the commitment to, to sacrifice and to some degree, frankly, you know, have some challenging times in the interim. And that includes staffing levels, but that's not what we're talking about. What we're talking about, what the community's been presenting to us, is not what the cost is to not have those cadet classes. What they're talking to us about is what is the cost of continuing to put people in positions of power that take lives? What, and, and, you know, some of these things you can't quantify, you can't quantify the value of a life, you can't quantify the manifestation of the trauma that people go through when they have law enforcement officers who engage in misconduct. And when we have to see it, there's all these, there's multiple tiers of trauma, you can't quantify that. But I tell you what you can quantify, what you can put a number on, how many instances of misconduct does the city have to incur in terms of our cost in order for us to start to realize that is a true cost? So we can avoid that by at the very beginning, having the kind of department that doesn't attract people that will engage in misconduct. We don't want this to be a bastion for them. We want this to be the kind of job that they don't want. There's going to be too much in the way of accountability expectations and scrutiny and effective leadership and effective discipline. There will be too much in the way of a culture shift where people will not, under any circumstances, tolerate the kind of misconduct that exists by way of, you know, our citizens' testimony and factual investigation reports that we've read that say we got problems. Why, why would you want more people to come into a department with those problems? I, I just, while I can appreciate the chief's thoughts around staffing, to some degree, that's his job, I do wish that at some point he could take the time to acknowledge what it is that we, his colleagues, and the community are asking for. And it's not for any additional challenge to be presented to the department. What it is, is us trying to achieve this true transformation that we all want and need, frankly, in which case you have to think deeper. And, but that to say, Ed, I would like for you to talk to us about the, you already talked to us about what the cost-saving implications would be if we didn't have 2021 cadet classes. Can you just talk to us about the one cadet class that in my mind's eye, I'm definitively proposing we, we pause?
Yes, I'd be happy to. We did put a response to a budget question out that lays this out in more detail. It's actually on page 104 of the backup materials we provided to you. Specifically, the scenario where we would just delay the Cadet Class Academy. That cadet class would fully take place during fiscal year 21, so we would realize the full savings of not having to pay those cadets. That's $2.3 million. We also estimate that we could get by with 47 fewer positions. So if you, you know, if you look at the current vacancies we have and Cadet Class 143 that's going to graduate in October, we're projecting out that at the beginning of October, we would have 40, or I'm sorry, that we would have 80 vacant positions. And we would need those vacancies if we're going to run a cadet class on the schedule that we normally do. But if we're not going to run the December or the November cadet class, we could get by with 47 fewer vacancies. Of those 80, we could cut to 47, which saves $5.3 million. And then we get into this kind of budget wackiness of vacancy savings. We actually budget for the police department, as we do for all of our departments, we budget a saving, an anticipated savings amount because we know that they're not going to have all their positions filled at any point during the year. For the police department for fiscal year 21, for sworn personnel, we currently have budgeted a negative dollar amount in their budget called vacancy savings of $8.2 million. So that's money that we've already taken away from them. And as we start removing more vacancies, their ability to achieve that vacancy savings number changes. And so we would, we would say we would need to add back $1.5 million to their budget. We need to make that adjustment to their budgeted vacancy savings amount. So I know that's kind of confusing and complicated. We always get into this discussion about vacancy savings and how it works, but bottom line would be a little bit more than a $6 million reduction that we would estimate that we could make to the police department's budget if we were to delay that class and if council elected to remove 47 positions from their budget. I do want to reiterate, though, that that $2.3 million for the cadet class should be viewed at one time because as we get back to fiscal year 22, we would anticipate that we'd go back to the schedule of running three cadet classes per year. And so you need to put that money back in their budget if you run the classes in fiscal year 22.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Actually, I have one other question while we have the manager and the deputy manager on the line.
Sounds good. Then Councilmember Alter will go next. Go ahead, Councilmember Harper Madison.
Thank you. So aside from, I know all of us individually are speaking to specific law enforcement officers and various people with, you know, law enforcement officers, and various people with, you know, some degree of subject matter expertise as it pertains to law enforcement, but I really, I'm trying to figure out a way for us to, either individually or as a body, have more access to current law enforcement officers who are interested in talking to us about their ideas for budget amendments and what that looks like for them. And I haven't, I don't know about y'all, but I haven't gotten any specific budget amendment proposals from anybody in law enforcement, only from the advocacy space. And I'm not sure exactly why that is. I don't know if they're not allowed to, or if they're just not inclined to, if their union leadership doesn't encourage them to participate civically. I'm not sure what the reason is that we're not hearing from them at all, but we had a question the other night during a community outreach engagement, and the question was posed, and it occurred to me at that time, no, I haven't, other than the folks that I'm seeking out and/or, you know, I have a previous relationship, I'm not hearing from anybody in the law enforcement space at all about what they propose around the budget, other than leadership, which I know what they think, I know where they're at. I'm talking about, you know, the people who this will affect the most.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll start out with just saying that shortly after that I put the memo out in June regarding the reimagining public safety process, it was very important to ensure that we had voices from the entire department, all of our officers, all the personnel are part of the awesome police department, be a part of that. And so I sent an email to the entire department, ensuring that they would be part of this reimagining process. We are working closely with HR to talk about what ways we can have in terms of surveys and focus groups, but that would be part of the ongoing work about the reimagining process, not specific to your question around budget. I don't know if Nury wants to add anything else on that, but it was critical for me to ensure that we heard voices from the department as we move forward.
I would concur. I don't have much to add, Manager, to that. We did not set about the work to inquire about what budgetary amendments would look like, but we have been focusing on, what does reimagining look like for you, and to have that be part of a process. We definitely want to be hearing from PD voices as we move forward.
Thank you both.
Thank you. And I don't know what the process would be to open it up so that you could hear from all of the PD officers, and whilst it would be real important to hear from the association, I wouldn't just limit it to that. Councilmember Alter.
So thank you, Councilmember Harper-Madison, for raising that issue. I think that our, in my view, both our public safety leadership and our public safety officers, although I don't know why the officer, if the officers are free to speak their mind, have been relatively quiet about helping us to reimagine public safety, and I think this is in stark contrast to what we see in some other cities. So if you take, you know, LA, for instance, their police department seems to, you know, they're facing very large cuts, but they're embracing their role in the process of reimagining public safety and how you think about it. Every division within LAPD has to think about, I think it's a 10% cut, in what their budget would look like. And I'm disappointed that, to date, we aren't hearing from our public safety leadership about how they constructively could be part of the process, or helping us to figure out, in a constructive way, where we could cut or not. So I did want to ask the chief if he had any thoughts that he wanted to share about where we are doing things that we shouldn't be doing beyond the mental health and homelessness that we've heard about already, and I think that there's a widespread agreement that we should be making some investments there. You know, where are you spending your time that you shouldn't be spending your time, that we should be looking for reassigning functions or cutting your role? Where are, you know, the savings? It's a 400 and some million-dollar budget. There has to be something in there that we should no longer be doing, or that we would be doing something else if we could. So if you could tell me, you know, on a broader level, where you're doing stuff you shouldn't be doing, that we should think about reassigning that function, and where would you begin to think about cuts?
Councilmember, yeah, in the $400 million budget, we're roughly at the 8% to 90% salary, and I'm sure you know that. So, you know, most of those are fixed costs. We look at the service that we provide to the community. I think that you've hit the obvious ones, where maybe there is opportunities to partner with other community agencies to provide services. Mental health is one that we absolutely know, not only in our community, but communities across the country, that policing can do differently with partnerships. This is an exercise we go through periodically to look at where are we spending our time, and again, it's what level of service do we want to provide? Right now, with the COVID restrictions, we are not responding to some calls that we used to respond to, crashes with no injuries, where, you know, we're simply going out there just to, you know, have people exchange information. That's one of the things that we would have to look at going forward, as far as whether or not we continue to do that. There are functions that need to be done that we do as a police department, that potentially others could do. Court services, we put police officers over in the courts, because they absolutely have to have security. You know, in the past, that was the city marshal program, so that's something that we could look at. Obviously, it's not something that we would suggest backing out of the budget in a week and a half, because there's not somebody to put in the courtroom for their security right now. So that's one of the areas that should be looked at. We have an emergency protective, an executive protection unit that provides protection to dignitaries and others when they're visiting, or others, and, you know, there's opportunities there potentially to pull from services. So there are things like that. We find ourselves in discussions on 911 hang-up calls. Should you respond to someone who calls 911, but then the line goes dead? We know going to those calls that the vast majority of the time, it's likely an accidental dial, but we don't want to miss that one or two where it wasn't, that the person made it to the phone, dialed 911, but then the phone got disconnected before we got there. So those are the balancing act that we do when we look at, where do we spend our time, and what is the need for that? Similar to burglar alarms, the vast majority of burglar alarms will be false alarms. There are communities that have gone to verified responses, making sure that the alarm company first interacts with the homeowner to ensure that it's not a false alarm, but in the time that that takes, if it were to be a valid alarm, then we would likely miss the opportunity maybe to catch an offender. So there are areas, I think, that we could look at as a community to talk about the service that our community wants, not the public safety needs as far as, you know, lives and safety are in danger, but just that service piece. I think that is ripe for discussions as we move forward through this reimagining process, to determine what the community would like from us, and if there are areas there to reduce the demands on our officers' time.
So are there specific things, though, apart from those things that you just mentioned, where you would look to cut?
Well, I think those are the ones that we have looked at right now, as far as any other specific areas I would recommend cutting, not right now, because we don't have anything to substitute right now, that I'm aware, for the services that we're providing. Oftentimes, we're the ones that get dispatched, because there's no one else to go perform that function. So again, as the items that I just listed, if we find others that can go and perform those functions, then there's an opportunity maybe to reduce the workload on the police department.
Thank you. And I think that is, you know, broadly, you know, we're trying to send the right tool to the right service, and I think broadly, that's where we all are. I hope we can engage a little bit more deeply on these questions, and hear from folks from the police department as well, as Councilmember Harper-Madison mentioned. I have some other questions for Ed, that go back to the Police Cadet Academy, and like many of my colleagues have mentioned, I am not, at this point, seeing that we can move forward with the November class. I've read the reports from Ms. Villanueva and Mr. Ferguson, and as a former professor, I don't see how you get that class up and going in November. We're still missing big pieces and chunks of what's recommended, and it doesn't help us to move forward with a class that we're not training in line with our community values. I am, however, still trying to understand the implications and the budget pieces for the cadet classes in the latter half of the fiscal year. And Ed, what I'd like you to help me understand is, there's a lot of different pieces, and there've been, you know, assertions made about the level of service that will be delivered, but those cadets who are waiting for those positions, they're not going out on patrol. There's some portion of the money that we're spending that's being used for overtime, but with all of the numbers and figures we've been given, I have not been able to figure out what we're spending to backfill those other positions, so that those positions have bodies in those seats, so to speak. So can you help me understand the interplay with the overtime, because we have the vacancy savings, and then there's overtime, and, you know, we're, you know, the assertion is that we're going to be reducing the amount of hours that our cops are spending, but I'm not understanding the numbers and how that plays out, because there's nobody in that role. And so if you can help us understand that a little better, I would appreciate it. Maybe the simplest number is what proportion of overtime is for backfill, but there's also a formula here that seems a little bit evasive.
Well, the overtime amount's going to vary with the number of vacancies, and I think the chief's touched on that some, and I'd really need to defer to his expertise, but, you know, the overtime, specifically the backfill empty seats, or not empty seats, but empty spots on a ship, to ensure they have enough officers on the street to provide coverage that they require. And when there's more vacancies, there's more likelihood that when people are out sick or on training, that they'll need to use overtime. So a lot of the time where that plays out is, we will budget the vacancy savings based upon maybe a normalized vacancy trend, but then if the department is running above that number of vacancies, yes, they will have additional savings, but now they're using that savings to spend more on overtime, and that's just, you know, one example where the budget doesn't always, or the actual expenditures don't always track precisely to the budget, because we're making assumptions in the budget about, how many vacancies will they have, what should we budget for that vacancy savings amount, and then they could be above it or below it, depending upon the size of their cadet classes and various factors. So it is a complicated equation. They all do relate together, the amount to budget for wages, the amount to pullout for vacancy savings, and then when the department has more vacancies, then what will be budgeted, what do they spend it on, and it's oftentimes overtime. But that's more of a variable for police. It's less of a certainty than it is in the fire department, where if there's an empty seat on a truck, it will be backfilled on an overtime basis. There's not this exact same style of four-person staffing mandate like there is in the fire department. And the chief might be able to speak more about, you know, when those triggers are, where we need to backfill a patrol spot that's vacant on an overtime basis, if that would be helpful, but I don't know if I'm getting to your point.
I'm really trying to understand is if we, you know, I don't see how we do the November class, but then I'm not understanding the consequences on the ground in terms of the number of hours of folks for the other cadet classes and what's happening, because, you know, the first cadet class is saying it's about a $4 million difference between, you know, removing the sworn officers and the adjustment due to vacancies. Is that difference, the overtime that then gets spent? Or is it something, you know, else, because it's not much different if I start taking the other cadet classes out? And so it's just, it's, you know, when we talk to people for what we've done so far, you know, we haven't removed any officer from the street, but I'm trying to understand if we're talking about those overtime hours, what we're actually giving up? And that seemed to be the argument that the chief was making, but I have no way to quantify that, or to understand that, or to know what that means.
And I'll step in for-
Because nobody's in those seats anyway, so they don't exist. So how is it working?
And chief, go ahead, Ed. I'll hold.
That wasn't me, chief.
Okay. So I guess, like Ed said, there's no exact formula. What we have to look at is staffing level on a shift. If we have a shift that's supposed to have 10 officers, and due to vacancies, there's only six officers on that shift, the likelihood is that on many evenings, they'll be trying to bring in a few officers on overtime. Now, on a Tuesday night, or that's the only shift out, we would need more than on a Friday or Saturday, when there's two shifts out in the same sector at the same time. So that's why it's not as easy as a formula, just because we always take into account the specifics of that particular evening. Are there other shifts that are already on, that are staffed better, or with the combination of all three shifts that are on, they have enough officers? So the impact is hard to quantify as far as a dollar-for-dollar equation like that. And keep in mind that these classes, the cancellation of any class really wouldn't have budgetary impacts for us until eight months later, because the position's going to be vacant while they're in the academy anyway, and so we're already going to incur that overtime. So the delaying of the July class, what that took to November, if we end up having it, would basically, four months after graduation, we'd have this window where we might be spending overtime, because the class hasn't graduated yet, that we wouldn't have spent otherwise. So that's how it plays out.
Okay, so you can't just tell me what proportion of overtime is spent on backfilling?
We can run a calculation and tell you how much we're spending in a given year on backfill overtime, but as far as correlating that to the number of vacancies in the call loads and all, it's a data point, but it doesn't necessarily let you extrapolate to predict what that might be next year.
Okay, so if we don't already have in the budget backup, something that really details out our overtime, I would like that, because that was my next question, which was, had you went through the overtime really quickly? And, you know, there are other places in proposals where we're cutting the overtime, and you went through that so quickly, it was hard to know what we would be cutting, and there are different proposals. I think Councilmember Cesar says 2,000, which may just be South Bay and something else, and Councilmember Pools had a whole lot more. So if we can get a budget question that details out the breakdown of what's accounting for overtime, coupled with this amount of that overtime is covered by special event fees, that I think would be helpful as we assess those two proposals.
It is, as I understand it, there's a, and I want to concur with the question that's being asked by Councilmember Alter, to be able to understand it better. I think that I read in one of the materials that from you, that said that there was a $9 million overtime budget, but that overtime budget was not a backfill budget. It was a budget that was an opportunity to be able to fund special circumstances, where there was a point-in-time event or occurrence that required us to bring additional officers on, because it was an extraordinary situation, as differentiated from overtime. It's not paid for that overtime budget, but it's paid out of the funds for FTEs that are not filled. And it seems as if there ought to be a way to see how much overtime is paid for that backfill component, and compare that to the number and amount of unfilled FTEs that existed, you know, in that same year. But it would be really nice to be able to see a relationship that would help us better understand any impact, if any, or to be able to get the scale of the impact of eliminating an unfilled FTE.
We can run those numbers, Mayor. There is on page 108 of your packet of information. There is a budget question response to, that gives a lot of information about the overtime budget, but it doesn't get into those ratios. And we do have the data to, as chief said, to go back and to run some analysis, specifically how much overtime was used for backfill as a percent of the overall overtime budget.
Ed, my team just sent me a text saying that we're at 6.2 million for backfilling for another right now.
Okay, but is that out of the 11 million number, I think, which is the total? Or is that coming from some other pot?
No, that would be out of the total overtime budget that we have. There's no separate pot for backfill.
Okay, but backfill covers more than just the cadet academy? It would cover like when people are sick or, or any other situation where you have to, to backfill a position?
That's correct, Councilmember.
But so 6.2 would be the outer limit, but there's still, so is there any way to figure out what's being filled for sick time or other leaves?
I'll check to see if we can break it down. And that's, that's the outer limit of vacancies kind of stay and staffing kind of stays where it's at now. If we see those grow, then I don't know, I'm not convinced that's the outer limit anymore. Because the need for backfill will grow as the vacancies grow in the department. Or if the staffing, the approved staffing level drops, but the call load does not, then we could expect to see increased need as well.
Okay, I, I appreciate that this is complicated, but I think it's really critical for us to be able to understand the implications of particular decisions and what it means for staffing levels. You know, as, as Councilmember Flanagan mentioned earlier, and I know I've talked to some of my colleagues about this as well. You know, if we're spending a lot of time and energy trying to transform the academy and the goal for that is ultimately to transform the whole system. And if we never get new cadets in there being trained, that part of this process won't happen. And so that does cause me some pause for moving forward. But the, the November class, there's just, the training's just not there yet. Doesn't do us any good to train folks if we don't have our training right. I appreciate everyone's patience with my nitty gritty questions. I'm really trying to understand some of these details. I would also like to know, Ed, for Councilmember Kassar's proposal, we need to, I assume there's another, another level that has to take place because it's not all ongoing funding?
The, which specific proposal? He laid out a lot of.
So Councilmember Kassar's proposal for the 21,740,000. And I really appreciate a lot of the places that he put the investments. But in terms of dotting our i's and crossing our t's, it's not all one-time funding. I mean, some of it's one-time funding and some of it's ongoing funding. But most of the expenses are considered, look like they're ongoing in the way that he's presented them. So do we have to, do we have to dissect that into of that 21,740,000? What's ongoing and what's one-time? And then match up the expenses to those categories as well?
Yeah, and, and I'd like to spend some, some time with anybody who would like to spend some time with me going through some of these numbers. Because he does reference the $10 million of projected savings by deferring all cadet classes next year and eliminating another 80 positions. But as I said, roughly 5 million of that would need to be added back to the budget in fiscal year '21 if we're going to go back to running, or I'm sorry, FY '22, if we're going to go back to running cadet classes. So a big chunk of the canceling the cadet classes item on his sheet would be, would be one-time. The overtime feasibly could be recurring. But again, I think Chief's laid out, there'd probably be some consequences associated with that. And then I think we need to spend some time talking about the, the various line item reductions and that, that $7.4 million of non-personnel cuts. There are certainly line items in the police department's budget where they have savings. They did not spend the planned amount. But there are probably equally many line items where they've spent more than what they had planned. And so if you look at their budget in totality, the police department usually ends a year with somewhere around $2 to $4 million of savings. In, in total, taking into account some line items are above and some are below. So I think we'd really want to spend some time looking through what those line item reductions are that have been identified, the total up to $7.4 million, to make sure that the money's actually there to be reduced from their budget and that won't just result in them going over budget by the end of the year.
Okay, so can we, do we have a budget question that asks us over the last four years, including this year, what their anticipated, you know, extra money at the end of the year is? Because I know there have been past years where they've had quite a bit of money to roll over at the end.
I don't know if there's been a budget question for it or not, but we do have data on that. We went back and looked for the last five years. FY '18 was an anomaly. I think, you know, they had around $15 million of savings. And that big savings had to do with a mid-year reduction to the insurance requirements, where all the departments basically got some savings as a result of that. And also had to do with delays in the contract. There was a period where we didn't have a contract and resulted in some savings for the department. So FY '18 was kind of an anomaly. But the other four of the last five years, the, the year-end savings for the department were in the range of $2 to $4 million. I don't have the exact figures, but usually they, they, they have been expending roughly 99% to 99.5% of their, of their budget. So trying to cut $7 million out of line items. I just want to make sure that that's actually leaves the department with a viable budget to run their operations throughout, over the course of a year. And, and it, you know, just more complicated than just looking at those line items where there were savings. It also kind of takes into account the line items where they went, they spent more than what they had planned for, for various reasons.
Okay, and then the last question on this, and I'll, I'll see the floor. Do your numbers for the cadet classes that talk about the, the removing the sworn positions, do those factor in reductions for vehicles and equipment as well? Because presumably you don't need new cars if you're not getting officers.
They, they don't, and that would, but we issue contractual obligations, which go into our debt portion of the tax rate. So by not, you know, by not having to purchase those vehicles, we would see savings but over the debt side of the equation. And it would result in a minimalistic tick down in the debt service tax rate. But it's not going to result in savings over on the operating budget that could be reallocated to other things. Because we, we purchased the new vehicles with, with a debt instrument called contractual obligation.
And is the same for the service and maintenance?
The service and maintenance is, would be separate from that. And, and I'd have to give back to you on the extent that we included in anticipated savings in say fuel costs or, or maintenance costs on the, on the new vehicle.
Okay, thank you.
Alex, anything else before we go to the other items? Councilmember Kassar?
I, I want to thank Councilmember Alter for raising that. We do need to sort out what is one-time and recurring. And I wanted to sort of, again, I didn't want to make this spreadsheet seem like a finalized list. So for sure, you know, we should see what people think best fits in recurring versus one-time. Mr. Vannino, help me understand though, that, that 5 million would kick in during the next fiscal year, but there's also a big jump in the savings the second fiscal year. Is it, aren't I right? I, I thought it was something like 10 million in year one and then actually a net increase of 3 million in year two, even once you put the, back in the 5 million in one time?
Well, some of that would have to do with the, with the additional positions that vacate. By not running cadet classes during fiscal year '21, you would realize additional vacancies. And if council chose to also eliminate some of those additional vacancies in fiscal year '21, then yes, there would, there would be additional savings by removing those from the budget. You get additional recurring savings depending upon if you wanted to reduce more vacated positions. But you would have to put in, you'd have to put back on that one-time savings for fiscal year '21 in order to be able to run cadet classes. So there would be a net to it.
Right, I thought my understanding from our back and forth was that you could actually make the 10 million be recurring and even potentially even more in recurring. It actually is, is we're just not doing more sworn this year. And you hold that? Then my understanding is that even when you back in the five next year, you still basically have recurring dollars.
Well, the, the, it's going to depend what happened with their, their vacancy savings number. It always kind of comes back to that vacancy savings amount, which in cutting, if we were to eliminate all the vacant positions this year, the 80 that they're projected to start the year with and to not run any of the cadet classes. You know, that's the scenario where we project getting to $10 million and we take their vacancy savings number to a pretty small dollar amount at that point. I think we cut it down to just a few million dollars, which would be the vacancy savings that's realized through the vacancies that occur during the year. But then if in fiscal year '22, our intent is to just fill all those positions that had vacated, then you're not going to get a recurring savings from that. So it really does come down to what happens with the additional positions that vacate during fiscal year '21 as a result of holding those cadet classes open.
Understood. So there's, there's two different ways to do it. And one creates more recurring, one creates one more one-time funding. And I guess we can get through all of that stuff offline as we come up with the proposals. The one other thing I will mention here to the, the manager and to my colleagues is the intent of many of the programs we're intending to reinvest dollars into is to reduce how often people have to call 911 with something serious. We actually want to reduce the call load. We actually want to reduce the amount of harm in the community. And manager, that's my expectation of what you'll do with the dollars. So in my, and what I've posted and what so many of my colleagues have posted, we are saying we want to reallocate money to substance use care, reallocate money to violence prevention. And what we expect on the administrative side is to use those dollars and to make sure they're used effectively and well, so that people aren't having to call 911 as much in the first place. Because what people are expressing is that just calling 911 after something bad happens, of course, we have that, but we want to reduce harm. I appreciate Councilmember Flanagan raising the fact that we are, out of the 15 biggest cities, 14th on the list in homicides. But of course, every killing is still horrible. You know, here just in the last, you know, month and a half or so, just in my district, Mr. Woody S. was killed, Mr. Harris behind Dobie Middle School, and Ms. Henson in Windsor Park, all killed and each one of those is terrible. And what we're, and of course, we should investigate those and hold people accountable in each of those cases. But I believe that with more family violence shelter, with gun intervention programs, some of these things that we have underfunded for years, that we can, you know, I'm not speaking to those particular three cases. But then in general, our goal is to actually bring that number down. Because I want to be 15 out of 15. And I think that's what the goal that the council has set unanimously from the outset. I think that's what every single one of us is saying. And, and I, while we can't control what people outside of the city organization say about our intentions, I would expect that everybody at the city organization characterize what the council is trying to do based on what the council is saying.
I appreciate that, Councilmember. And as we move to other budget discussions on other items, I do want to conclude this portion with that same sentiment that we are committed to ensuring that this re-envisioning process of our public safety institutions is not only transformational, but also sustainable. And as the deputy city manager outlined, I know it's critical that we hear from our community about what their needs are. And so we can incorporate that feedback into some of the recommendations that we put forward. But those principles and ideas that, and goals that you, you set out, Councilmember Kassar, certainly in alignment with what were my expectations for our, for our team. I'll pass it back to you, Mayor.
Hi, colleagues. There were, Ed, you want to take us through your, the rest of your agenda? You have discussion of other budget concepts that were posted to the message board? I think it was beginning with EMS that Councilmember Alter had done.
Yes, Mayor, we could either go in this order or it may be more efficient to go by council member. But these are items we've pulled off the message board. You can see from Councilmember Alter. And there's co-sponsors on these, but these were, this was our understanding of who the lead sponsors were. An, an item to enhance funding in urgency medical services. The concept of creating a new office of the chief medical officer and an office of violence prevention were posted by Councilmember Alter. Several proposals by Councilmember Poole, two by Councilmember Ellis, and then a food access item from Councilmember Garza. So I would suggest we do something similar to what we just did for Austin Police and let each council member walk the group through their, their proposals and then just open the floor for a council dialogue about these things as we try to, we try to better understand where consensus may be forming in regards to some of these different councils.
Sounds right to me, too. Councilmember Alter, you want to start us off?
Sure, and I understand that there are representatives from the, from EMS and EMSA on the line and also Dr. Scott on the line for the chief medical officer. If folks have questions, and I, I might, you know, when we're done presenting, I might invite Dr. Scott particularly to speak about the chief medical officer position. Because I think it would be valuable for folks to hear from him as well. So let me start with the amendment related to EMS. And I'm joined on this with co-sponsors, councilmembers Ellis, Harper-Madison, Poole, and Tovo. And I have the sense from the dais that most of the entire dais supports additional investments in EMS. The impetus behind this amendment was to kind of put forward the minimum, not as much as we should be doing, but the absolute minimum that we needed to be doing to respond responsibly to the medical emergencies that we have in our city, to be able to be prepared in light of the pandemic. We have learned a lot from the pandemic. And one of the things that has been even more transparent, although it's been going on for years, is that we haven't invested enough in our EMS. So what, what we've laid out are as the first step in the next investments that have to take place. And I'll speak for myself, not for my co-sponsors. These are investments that I need to see in this budget if I'm going to support the budget moving forward. So this was worked out in conjunction, working with EMS and with EMSA. So it is not simply what the MSA put forward was a combination, working through things about the highest priorities on that list. So, and they're all sort of COVID and pandemic related, which I believe opens the door for us to be able to try to seek FEMA money or CARES money to help fund this in the short run. Because I think these are very much, allow us to better address our COVID response. So this amendment adds two 24-hour ambulances and the associated FTEs with one of those ambulances going online in October and the other in January. It increases the paramedic consult line staff. So this would add eight field clinical specialists for the consult line. These are the folks that are currently triaging our people with COVID-19 symptoms. To date, that line has taken 5,000 COVID-19-related calls. And that allows our medics to make better PPE decisions after COVID-19, which hopefully there will be an after. These paramedics will help provide triage to get the right resources to the community. Then we've added four communication specialists coming online in January. There's a need for additional folks in this line. And it's not communications like PIO, it's communications like direct, directing the medics to those who need assistance. This call volume is not meetable by the specialists that we have currently. And then it adds five field commanders coming online in January because we're adding considerable staff with all those things. You need to have the management levels as well. The sum total of the cost is $5 million with about 1,000.25, roughly speaking, in one-time costs. And then the way that I've structured this is that we have also see as part of our re-imagining public safety, called out several things that should also be part of the discussion, some of which have been taken up in other amendments by colleagues that I'm also a part of. So adding additional community health paramedics to assist our neighbors experiencing homelessness, two additional demand ambulances. And then there's also support staff that is needed. And I would say that that support staff likely needs to be in the base amendment. It was brought to my attention as we were actually posting this, so we couldn't put it in there. There are four positions, I believe, that have been identified by EMS. And I understand that EMSA agrees that those staff positions are likely needed there for scheduling and a host of other things. And I would ask maybe the EMS folks if they can, can speak to that. Um, I'm not sure, Mayor, if you want me to, um, have that conversation with the EMS Chief Rodriguez now or to come back to it after we've introduced all the amendments. Not sure if the numbers are on.
Let's come back to that after they've had chance to introduce, but we will come back to it.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. Um, the second, um, item that I wanted to, um, introduce is one that I have floated the idea on the message board, but have not finalized, um, all of the details enough to put on the message board. We're waiting on numbers. We know all the people that are involved. Um, and this is to create an office of the chief medical officer and expand community access to physician services. So the first part of this amendment, um, combines the local health authority that's in Austin Public Health with the EMS Medical Director. Um, the second part, um, helps us to expand our community access to physician services by beefing up the medical director's office, which would now be the chief medical officer's, um, department, um, so that we can better provide physician services, better provide telehealth, um, better enhance our ability to provide the right healthcare to the right problem in the city, sets us up to leverage federal dollars that will be coming for alternative delivery methods that EMS can take advantage of, but that require physician assistance, allow us to, um, leverage telehealth in new ways. Um, and allow us to see savings because we will, you know, down the line, see savings because we won't have to send ambulances for um, situations that don't require an ambulance, but do require medical care, um, for somebody who does not have another, another mechanism. Um, this is not actually being proposed to be funded from the general fund. Um, we, um, are proposing to fund this through adjustments of our fee schedule, um, for, um, transport fees for ambulances. Um, leveling, levying a new surcharge for EMS patients that do not live in Travis County. Um, and, and potentially adding a per-vehicle AFD fee for motor vehicle crashes. So right now we send AFD out for motor vehicle crashes, um, that help and the insurance on those motor vehicle crashes does not pay us anything for um, that service. It is common in other cities for there to be, um, that the, um, levy that is largely paid for by, um, insurance. Um, Dr. S. Scott is on the line when we get back to this to speak to that, and I think it would be really helpful, um, to hear him talk about the value of, um, this direction. Um, different pieces of this have been put through the process to reach us for the last three years, but have not made it. But I think in light of COVID, in light of our efforts to reimagine public safety, um, and because we have been able to find a way not to do this with the general fund, I think this is a really significant step forward for us in how we think about, um, public health and, and think about things. Um, the third investment, um, in our community that I'm proposing is the Office of Violence Prevention, which builds off of work of the Gun Violence Prevention Task Force that, um, we authorized, um, last August that just came back to us. Um, I don't, I thought we were going to be talking about this on Thursday, so I don't have all of the details of the funding amounts, but I do know that the first step would be what's called a survey, a technology, a survey of, um, the community, um, to identify exactly what this office should focus on. Um, and building that up into the office. So there would be two parts to the budget for this office over the course of the year. The first port would be, um, sending out that RFP, doing that study, and then you'd build the office based on the results of that study so that the office, um, is building off of community needs. Um, we've been talking with, um, folks in other cities that have been involved with their Office of Violence Prevention, and we're finalizing what we think is the right steps. Um, because you would be doing that survey first, it can dovetail nicely with the city manager's, um, proposed framework for, um, the concept. But I think we would need to earmark the money for later in the year, uh, but specify the FTEs, et cetera. Um, as we have a fuller picture of exactly the best, um, approach for the city. Um, but that will still be, um, considerable dollars, um, by the second half of the year and into, uh, the next fiscal year. Um, the basic idea underlying the Office of Violence Prevention, um, is that you can have, um, targeted interventions that help people, um, in ways that prevent the violence in the first place. You can do things like have folks at hospitals working with folks who have been victims of gun violence. You can have them target right into the communities where we have a very small number of people who are the perpetrators of gun violence. This builds off of work that comes out of, um, experience, lived experience of many of folks in the African-American community who've been advocating for this kind of approach successfully and successfully implementing this in many, many other cities. Um, and the task force recommended that this would be an appropriate step forward. One piece of what they would be focused on would be gun violence, but depending on how that survey framework goes, it could also be related to other types of violence, such as domestic, um, violence. Um, I think this is an important, um, next step in terms of making Austin safe for all, and I will have a clearer, um, proposal for you, um, hopefully by the end of the week. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Poole.
Thanks. Um, let's see, this one is additional community health paramedics. And I was going to suggest, if Councilmember Kitchen would want to just touch on the mental health diversion, I think that leads in nicely to the CHPs.
Uh, yes, I, I just briefly remind people, I, I mentioned it a bit earlier. Uh, there is a budget writer that speaks to direction for, um, carrying out and implementing the mental health, um, diversion initiative. And it references the, um, budget writer that Councilmember Poole is talking about, which is to, um, uh, is the interaction with the additional seven, uh, CHPs, uh, that is in Councilmember Poole's budget writer. Those CHPs will be focused on assisting with homelessness, but also with supporting the, um, tensions in the mental health, uh, diversion initiative.
So, um, the CHPs, the Community Health Paramedics, seven FTEs we're looking for. Um, and as an aside, I'll have one pages for everybody to look at. I think some of them are already up on the message board that gives you a good overview. Um, we are asking for just under seven hundred thousand, uh, additional general fund monies, ongoing funds. Uh, we worked with Austin Emergency Medical Services folks and Councilmembers Alter, Harper Madison, Kitchen and Tovo are all on this item. What this does is, this is part of what we've been asked to do by the community, which is help divert emergency response calls to trained professionals. It's critical when we're talking about calls, which we were doing just a little bit ago, for people experiencing homelessness or for those experiencing a mental health crisis. So we're looking for the proper skill sets. We want to respond with appropriate resources and skill sets to the community needs, and the reality is we're awful, often treating healthcare issues with law enforcement. And the officers are not trained for these calls, so I think everybody is in agreement that professionals who have the appropriate skill set are the ones we should be sending. So that is the EMS CHP request of seven, just under seven.
Okay. Um, anybody else want to lay anything out before we go back to, uh, Councilmember Alter and only post, yes, Councilmember Ellis? I'm sorry, I'm, Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you. Um, I have my message board post up that is in regard to a couple of items for, uh, Parks and Recreation Department. One of which is about, um, changing the roles of Parks Police into Parks Rangers and enhancing the role of our current staff as Park Rangers. Adding a few positions and potentially changing their citation ability. So right now they are only able to do citations for vehicles that are on parks' property. But we wanted to give them the ability to enforce existing parks' rules on parks' land, and that would be um, anything from behavior to littering, glass containers and things like that, that might uh, potentially have some environmental hazards or other health and safety issues at the same time. And so I have that budget amendment up on the message board as well as a trails, operation and maintenance budget amendment. And this is because our Parks and Recreation Department is, um, but behind on the funding and ability for them to properly maintain parks and trails. And not only is this a matter of safety, um, in our trails and park spaces for people who want to utilize them, but it's also an important aspect of our transportation network. And so if we're able to keep some of these trails um, a little bit better maintained and give them the appropriate funding to properly handle the procedures they need to in the Parks Department. Um, I think this would be a really good win for the city. We all know that during coronavirus, people have been utilizing our park spaces much more than usual. Um, some people were already daily park users and a lot more of our population is now realizing how wonderful our park system is and also how much in need of attention it is. Um, and there is a third item that we haven't posted yet. There's still a couple of things we're kind of working on behind the scenes. Um, and that is some work that was brought to our attention. It's actually about EMS and insurance billing. And so we're still asking questions, which is why we haven't really spoken to any other offices or put anything in writing on the message board. But there is a E P three program is looking at utilizing, and it would have an RFP to look at the processes of who is going to emergency emergency rooms and who is going to other forms of clinics or what might be able to be assisted through telehealth. And so we just started asking questions about it. Haven't posted anything yet, but it would involve a consultant through an RFP process and then a subsequent temporary staffer to act as kind of a pilot program for this fiscal year to see what needs might be available. So I wanted to daylight that here because it's, it's so new that we're working on, but if anyone, you know, Councilmember Alter's been doing a lot with EMS, so if you have capacity to team up or if other people want to get with us offline, we're happy to further that conversation and make sure as many questions we have as possible are answered before we move into the next, the next phase of budget. So those are the ones that we have right now. Uh, we've also been looking at the Clean Community Fee for quite a while and looking at the utilization of resource recovery Parks Department and some work that Waterside Protection does with Drainage Utility Fee. Um, so we are still working on that and haven't had anything that is in a form we feel comfortable posting publicly yet, but um, I think that should cover most of what we have on our plate. Let me flip real fast. Um, yes, I, I believe that is it for, for the stuff that we're working on right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Casar, and then the mayor, Pro Tem.
There are three things, uh, listed in my list, at least that weren't in what Mr. Vainino shot out just because um, they've been more in discussion at Public Safety Committee or prior resolutions. Uh, I'm really supportive of everything that people have, have said so far and tried to include those in the list. Uh, but we did unanimously pass the resolution on, uh, increased family violence shelter. Um, the, as we've heard, we haven't added new family violence protective beds in a really long time. Uh, I think the two million each year recurring that I have proposed would allow us to have, continue to have some amount of distributed, um, shelter. The last two budgets, we've sponsored and added the Bridge to Safety Program to get people out of a dangerous situation. Sometimes to shelter or sometimes maybe to just a bus ticket or to a hotel or apartment. Um, but then also, and we should just continue to have conversations about, uh, 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 expansion of the brick and mortar, um, shelter capacity we have in the city. Um, and after having lots of conversations, I've come to believe we need both and we need expansion of both. Now that we're going to be seeing, as I, I, I expect, both, uh, some, you know, we have new prosecutors, um, starting next year. Um, less prosecution of a lot of substance use. We need to replace the, the incarceration response to substance use with, uh, with care. We still, we don't want to just leave a boy. We actually want to replace that with something. So that's, I think, addressing, starting to build up our substance use programming in the city is important. That isn't on that list that Eddie mailed, but it's on the spreadsheet I shared. And then, um, I'm really supportive and appreciate Councilmember Alter and others focusing on violence prevention. I, I want us to figure, land between here and Wednesday the best we can on both having some level of Office of Violence Prevention and surveying and figuring out what the most effective uses of money are, but also to start deploying programming through Austin Public Health that APH thinks would be good as soon as possible. And whatever that balance is, I'm happy to find it with the council. But I, I, I want us to be judicious and set it up thoughtfully. At the same time, if we dedicate enough dollars, I think there's some that can be deployed into contracts immediately. Um, and I just want y'all to think about where we land on that question.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Garza, then Councilmember Poole.
The wrong. Meant to unmute and then turn my camera off. Sorry. Um, I wanted to lay out the food access amendment that I'll be offering. Um, because I think our focus on equity and racial justice isn't just about public safety, so I'm really, um, happy to hear all of the additional, uh, amendments that are being laid out, but specifically to food access. As we, um, when this pandemic started, Councilmember Harper Madison and I started conversations about food access and, and, and access to, to basic necessities, and we thought we'd come up with this great idea, and it turns out there were, there was a nonprofit already working in that space, and they had, they had been set to, um, start rolling out basically like a mobile grocery store in northeast Austin and, uh, had to put a hold on that because of the pandemic. But they do have funding to, to, um, when they figure out the social distancing aspect of it, they do have funding to start that pilot project for northeast Austin, but if they were also to have another bus donated by Cat Metro, um, they could also expand a second location to southeast Austin, which, um, from my understanding, it's about four hundred thousand dollars. Um, that proposed amendment is also part of Councilmember Casar's proposal for police. And, um, we've been talking to advocates about it as well. So that will be one of my, um, budget amendments, and I don't, we don't, I don't, I don't want to waste your time with why food access is important and, you know, grocery stores um, are so necessary in many parts of our town. I also want to just voice, uh, the co-sponsors that I have confirmed on that are Councilmember Casar and Councilwoman Harper Madison. Um, happy for others to join. And specifically, I wanted to mention, talk about the Office of Violence Prevention and how I absolutely support that and endorse that, um, we often, when we're talking about public safety and, and how, how we can better respond, uh, we, we, we're not having the conversation about prevention. And just like we have a fire department that is as available and ready to respond to fires in our community, we also have a fire prevention part of the fire department. And I don't, I don't, we have something like that in our police department. So I'm a big supporter of that and agree with Councilmember Casar with regards to, um, help, uh, supportive housing, permanent supportive housing and, um, helping families into my domestic violence and how we better support that and that that, how that could reduce our call volume as well. So I think that's, I think my message board post addresses most of the other things. Oh, the let Texas vote. Um, it's my understanding, and I just want to make sure if this is maybe an ed question, but it sounds like if we were to make it an, an optional holiday for people to take if they need to take the day off to vote in November, um, doesn't look like, I think I just got my budget answer, my budget question answered, and it doesn't look like it would cost very much. Um, is that right? Or there would be no cost, only to maybe sworn personnel?
Yeah, and that's my, I have to go back and revisit that question, but, um, I do know that the bulk of any cost would be associated with applying the new holiday that's worn personnel.
So, um, I, I, I would like to go forward on that, especially, um, we, we, we passed a resolution, call, you know, calling November the third this year, I can't remember because all I can think is October thirteenth. It's the first day of early voting, and I'm excited to vote that day, and I hope everybody early votes, but, um, we did pass a resolution making that a, a city holiday, let Texas vote day and day. So I, I'm also hoping to see if we can get, get whatever necessary funding to allow our employees to take the full day off and celebrate an important day in our, in our community, in our country, uh, election day. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Poole, I recognized you before. You passed it to Anne, and I didn't come back to you, and I apologize for that. Councilmember Poole, you want to work through the other things that you have?
Right, I have, um, do you want me to do all of them all at once or? Okay, great. I just have.
Okay, great. I just have a couple more. Childcare at our Parks and Rec Recreation Centers. They ask is for a million and a half general fund money that would be ongoing. I did also have an additional facilities item that related to some renovations that were necessary. And I think that Councilmember Harper Madison is going to take that one. So I'll just talk a little bit about the childcare. This one is, let's see, ongoing 15, 1.5 million. And that's the ongoing, and one time is 800,000. This is an item that the Austin Parks Foundation worked with my staff and many of you on. And I think I have some additional cosponsors on this, but we haven't gotten word back from everybody yet. So, and one note about the one-time funding. The staff is temporary on this item, but the expansion of the capacity needs to be obviously permanent. This relates to daytime childcare, virtual learning at the rec centers, hard plans to hire temporary staff if we fund this. They'll target building capacity at rec centers where we have a lot of demand and where the facility can handle that demand under our COVID-19 protocols. We have a lot of uncertainty around school reopenings. We know schools will also, when they reopen, be at a lower capacity. So this is an excellent way for us to help our families with childcare, also with learning, and just as an additional public service when working from home is not possible. And then just another emphasis on how helpful this is during COVID. But it also increases our capacity for childcare going forward, which is also a concern of many on this dais. Our park staff can provide academic, social, and physical benefits for our kids in a safe and supportive environment. And you all know, we have a tremendous demand for childcare in our community. There's the long waiting lists for childcare in our rec centers. And that's because of the quality of the care and the affordability that we're able to offer. So I'm hoping we can respond to our families, prioritize this demand, and really make a difference in the community with the expansion of childcare at our recs.
Thank you, Councilmember Kitchen.
Thank you. This is all just excellent work on behalf of every, of everyone. I wanted to mention just a couple of other things that I'm pleased to be a cosponsor with Councilmember Alter and appreciate her work on two items. One related to the Office of Violence Prevention. The Chief Medical Officer, I posted my support for these on the message board. And I want to talk a minute about the Chief Medical Officer. I appreciate the work that Councilmember Alter has been doing. And I appreciate Dr. Esker bringing this to us. I think it is truly transformative to put in place a chief medical officer. This goes a long way towards, towards effectuating our focus on health as a community and putting that position in place is one of the infrastructure changes we can make around our staffing and the way that we are organized that will truly help us implement and focus the kinds of public health benefits that we can have and that Dr. Esker has spoken with us about. Part of, you know, part of his speaking with us has been around COVID. But this is something that he's been working on and interested in for quite some time. And so that office in conjunction with the work of EMS, and I'll have a few questions when we, when we get to having them speak, I think, I think is an example, example of a very exciting, transformative change that we can make. I also wanted to mention just one other thing that I have outstanding question to Director TruLove that I think may already be addressed, but I have asked it and I want to make sure it is. And we'll follow up if we need to. But that relates to staffing for moving forward with implementing our anti-displacement strategies. You know, we've been talking about that a lot with regard to Project Connect, but it actually goes beyond that. We had the results from our UT uprooted study a while back. And we've been talking about displacement strategies in a number of different ways for a while now. So we took a question out to Director TruLove because we understand that with the reorganization of those departments, that there'll be some staffing that can focus on this. And so we were just wanting to make sure there's sufficient staffing to accomplish those tasks. And so that's just by way of letting you all know that we have that question out to Director TruLove. When we get an answer or when the director gets a chance to speak to it, we will let everybody know.
Yes, Councilmember Poole.
I think I'll run you real quick through the last items that I have. I have three left. And then I, and I think that might be all that are on the list from the agenda, but there might be others that we don't know about. Austin Fire Department, the aerial ladder staffing with 16 FTEs. And this is for the EMS fire station at Moore's Crossing. And you can see the numbers there, ongoing. It's a little bit less than 1.8 million. I have worked, my staff and I have worked with the Austin Fire Department, and this is cosponsored by the Mayor Pro Tem. We have the aerial ladder. That was funded last year. I think that was an item that the Mayor Pro Tem led on last year. Staffing was delayed because of financial issues with AFD. And I know we still have some of those financial issues. We still have some of those things to work out. We do need to move forward with putting the aerial ladder to work for our communities. So if you look at my information sheet, you'll, you'll find a table that demonstrates that Austin is falling behind in staffing for aerial ladder apparatus. We have the equipment, now we need to put it to good use. So that's the aerial ladder staffing request for the fire department. My last two items, Workforce First Program Increase. That program that we started last year with the Other Ones Foundation has been a really great success. Looking at continuing the money that we had in it last year and adding another 328,000 in new money. And it is coming in equal shares from General Fund, Drainage Utility Fund, and the Clean Community Fee. Austin Resource Recovery in particular has really stepped up to fund a significant portion of that program. So hugely successful program, a model for our city. Workforce First was created by the Other Ones Foundation. This is that regular employment, job training, access to support services and assistance with housing for people experiencing homelessness. This is where we give people jobs and it brings a sense of purpose and civic responsibility. And then my last one is abortion access. Again, a program that we started last year, another one that the Mayor Pro Tem led on. I was a cosponsor along with Councilmember Kassar. This is that logistics program for access, getting women to the sites where if they need to have personal healthcare services like abortions, then we help them get there and get the access to it. So they ask is $250,000 from the general fund for ongoing funds. In support of this and working with my staff and with you all were the Lilith Fund, NARO, Pro Choice Texas. And then my two cosponsors so far are Mayor Pro Tem Garza and Councilmember Ellis. We approved the program last year at 150,000. We want to recommit this year to the community need. Increase the program amount by 100,000 to 250,000 so that more Austin women have affordable access to this measure of healthcare. We think we can do this in an equitable way and in a way that responds to the challenges that our communities facing right now. I think that Mayor Pro Tem Garza may have some budget direction on this program that she'd like to discuss, and I support her direction.
I don't know.
Just talking.
If anybody wants to sign on to this item, I would love to add your name, actually.
Councilmember Kitchen.
Oh, I just, I forgot to mention that I'm also a cosponsor on the homeless workforce one that Councilmember Poole just talked about. It's a, it's a very effective program. And as she, as she mentioned, it gives our people experiencing homelessness the opportunity to work and earn money. So I'm glad that we're bringing that, I'm glad that she's bringing that forward this time to, to grow that program again as we did last year.
Councilmember Harper Madison, then Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to echo what Councilmember Kitchen just said as a result of the proposal from Councilmember Poole. Just in terms of speaking about the Other Ones Foundation and recognizing just how beneficial that partnership is for the city of Austin. And so anything we can do to move us in the direction of having a more robust system of financial support for that organization. Something I'd like to point out is you guys have probably all seen that Windsor Park video floating around the internets. And as soon as contact was made with the Other Ones Foundation, they were able to, by way of their Workforce First initiative, get out there. I mean, this week, within the same week, get out there and start to reconcile the issue out there. So I'm 100% behind any effort we can put forward to, to making sure we show our support because they definitely align with the community values that we're putting forward.
I also understand that this morning, workforce, I mean, watershed, watershed protection and par was also out at that site that was subject to that video as well. Councilmember Ellis.
If you still have room, I'd also like to add my name. They obviously do great, great work. Chris Baker is a fantastic guy that puts his heart into everything that he does. They actually started out near the Wyatt Oak Hill at the Oak Hill United Methodist Church that has a freeze weather shelter as well. But they are now expanding into more places in the city. And so I think it's fantastic for more people who are experiencing homelessness to get to be in contact with the work they're doing. And they are also assisting with the camp that's over off of Montopolas to try to help make sure they have more assistance with that camp. So I'm so glad that they are expanding and so glad they'll get to touch so many more districts because it really is a fantastic program. And I appreciate Councilmember Poole working on that.
Great. Colleagues, anything else? Councilmember Alter.
I wanted to see if Dr. Esker was still on the line.
Oh, that's right, sorry.
Mayor, just before we get questions to staff, I do feel responsible to remind the council, just as I said in the beginning of the afternoon's presentations, that by the action that we took last week with the 3.5% property cap tax or increase, that we really have now set the universe of resources that are available in this budget. And so I'm going to ask Ed Benigno to walk through the budget amendment form that we put forward before. And we stand ready to really work with each of you as you develop your budget proposals to identify where those funding sources could come from. Ed?
Thank you, Spencer. And we did send out an Excel spreadsheet form that you can use. You take your ideas and put them into an actual budget amendment language. It's a pretty straightforward form that looks to align your proposals to the correct outcome of the strategic plan and also to identify cosponsors, funding amounts, and sources of funding. And so my staff stands by to help you craft your amendments that would come forward next week as part of budget adoption. But we would encourage everybody to start working to take your concepts from where they are to an actual formulated budget amendment. So come budget adoption next week, we're all working from a consistent set of documents. It just facilitates the process greatly. And so the sooner you can get those in, the sooner we can work with you on them and get finalized information to all the council members.
So this, the process that I just thought I heard is counter to how we've done this in the past. And I think it's real important that we don't link the, the, the request for additional funding to a specific request for finding funding available. I think those are two separate questions. So to the degree that we have funding that's available, it's going to accumulate. And then the council can decide the priorities for things that it wants to spend it on. But someone's ability to be able to get a, a, something funded shouldn't be tied to their ability to be able to find money that's available. If we find money that's available and if there are things the council wants to do, then we should handle each of those with respect to the priorities. So I'm confused. I mean, I want to make sure that people are proposing budget items that they want to fund, whether they have a funding source for it or not. And Ed, I would appreciate if you would go through the budget and hear ideas from people and be able to report back to the council on, on ways that we might be able to find additional funding for council priorities that are, that are identified. But those two things, in my mind, are not, not linked, other than we need money in order to be able to, to fund.
Right, no, and I, we, I understand that. The form we're using this year, proposing to use this year, is the same exact form we used last year. And the sources of funding piece is more along the lines of what appropriate funding sources are. So is it a general fund? You know, most of the time, these are general fund items. It could be that it's a one-time funding or reserves. Or it could be other sources of appropriate funding, depending if it's a one-time item or ongoing. And so that's the, the type of funding information we're looking at this stage in the game. And then we'll, we'll start trying to work to align council's different proposals to those funding sources. But as City Manager mentioned, we, you know, different than in previous budgets, we really are kind of right up against the cap of our tax limitations already at that 3.5% level. So the funding is going to be much more challenging this budget cycle than, than ever before.
And I understand that, and obviously that needs to happen. But there are some ideas that people are proposing to find additional dollars. You know, things like, you know, there's additional money in sales tax or there's additional one-time expenditures, money they can create one-time funding. And I, and at some point early in the process, we're going to ask you to address that universe as well of possible places where there is additional revenue that the council could decide or not decide to put to other priorities. And that would be separate from, and in addition to, the ones that have been specifically proposed with respect to the, to the public safety budgets, which obviously we're also going to have to cover. Councilmember Flanagan.
I was really glad to hear what Councilmember Alter said about some of the fee schedule stuff she mentioned. I'm very interested in exploring that. And Councilmember Ellis, you talked about some fee structure stuff as well. I think those are really, really good opportunities that, that I know staff has been looking at since the tax cap laws came in or since tax cap was reduced. And I'm very interested in continuing that thoughtful process. And manager, if those ideas are even, you know, partially baked, it'd be great to know them so that we can decide if we want to bake into our budget now, the implementation three or six months from now, if it's not ready to be done next week. Because unlike a tax rate, we can change fee structures mid-year if we're finding an ability to do that. And just as a reminder to everybody, I know you know this, but also for the public, we are having a Public Safety Committee meeting on Thursday, be it 10 a.m. We are scheduled to go until 2 o'clock, and we will take a lunch break. My hope is that we can take all the stuff today that there seemed to be a lot of broad agreement on within the public safety universe and have the Budget Office work through some, some more detail or come back to us on Thursday with whatever, whatever further clarification is needed for staff to be fully prepared to give us stuff to vote on next week. So if you're all are able to attend on Thursday, I'm sure it will be a continuation of a very interesting conversation.
Thanks for that. And my understanding is, thanks, that we're going to hold off on the discussion of the Act of Transportation Bond until after the staff's been able to supply the information that was requested in the resolution. Councilmember Alter, we're going to talk with Dr. Esker.
I do. Just before, I wanted to just flag a budget rider that I have that has to do with Austin Water. I've been working with Austin Water to see if there's a way to help the, the 10,000 folks who are receiving Austin Energy Cap funding, but who are not able to receive Austin Water because of the way the meter structure works in multifamily. They have a process that they're moving forward, but it will require a fee adjustment later in the year. So it's just a budget rider to say, go forward with that, work with the Austin Water Committee and come back with the fee adjustment when you're ready. So that will be moving forward. I also am a cosponsor of the Other Ones Foundation amendment that Councilmember Poole is bringing forward. And I really appreciate that program and opportunities that we have for workforce development. and opportunities that we have for workforce development that also provide services we need for our city. And Greg, I look forward to talking with you about Office of Violence Prevention, with the other folks who are working with that, with me, as well as Victim Services. For the Chief Medical Officer, I'd asked Dr. Esq. to be available. I've been working very closely with him on this. And as, you know, we've seen him demonstrate over the course of COVID, there's a lot of healthcare issues that we could be better addressing as a city that, in the case of COVID, are contributing to comorbidity. But there's some enormous opportunities by rethinking how we're delivering some of the care with the clinical resources that we do have that will allow us to improve access to care, leverage additional resources, and save money because we won't have to send our ambulances to, to situations where telehealth or some other things might, might work. But I wanted to give Dr. Esq. a chance to speak about, you know, why do we need to do this approach of creating a chief medical officer and expanding physician access?
Thank you, councilmember Alter, and Mayor, and, and council for the opportunity to talk to you about this proposal. You know, the, the city of Austin, I think, has benefited greatly from a, a close relationship between EMS and public health during this pandemic process. That's certainly not the case across the United States or even across Texas. But they, the, the heart of the, the Chief Medical Officer, Office is really to create strategic alignment across departments as it relates to providing clinical services. And that may be medical or, or mental health services. We have a very large healthcare workforce. In EMS and fire alone, we have 2,000 healthcare providers. We have people, we have great resources, thanks to, to you all and, and our citizens. And this provides us an opportunity to align those resources, to identify where we have redundancies, where we have gaps, and better align those needs and resources so that we can do a better job. You know, this, this proposal really merges, to some extent, the, the position of EMS Medical Director, which I currently have, as well as a role in public health. You know, initially, we discussed it, it to be the, the health authority. I would suggest that we modify that to be health authority, or alternate health authority, as it may be challenging in the future, once, once I'm out of the picture at some stage, to, to find somebody who has the background on the EMS system side and the background on the public health side. And because that is an appointed position, which requires City Council and Commissioners Court approval, I think it's important to have some flexibility there. But about the building out, the enhancing community access to physician services, now, this is really along the lines and consistent with what, what councilmember Ellis was talking about, the ET3 Initiative, which is, is a transformational program in terms of EMS services. We, we have a nine-in-one system that, that answers more than 100,000 calls a year for service. But 100,000 times, people don't need an ambulance and a fire truck. 100,000 times a year, they don't need service within nine minutes. And what this does is, is it enhances physician access by hiring additional physicians and physician assistants who can, can help provide in-person services as well as telehealth services, and avoid the unnecessary dispatching of, of ambulances and fire trucks in circumstances where you don't need that. And it also represents a great opportunity to, for cost savings to our community. We know that ambulance bills cost money. We know that ER bills cost a lot of money. You know, sometimes people have a $50 problem, and they don't need a multi-thousand dollar solution for that problem. And we're in a circumstance where we can create transformational change in terms of the services that we provide. And, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to have this discussion. I'll be happy to, to take questions if you like.
Thank you, Dr. Esq. One other thing that I just wanted to ask you to share with council is, there's a, there's a piece of this that's also meeting statutory requirements for oversight for our EMS. So there's particular ratios that we need to follow. And Travis County Medical Society has put forward some recommendations. Can you speak to how this proposal helps us to meet those oversight requirements as well?
Sure. The, so the, the state requires necessary support to, to be provided to the, the medical director of the EMS system. In 2017, the Travis County Medical Society unanimously passed a resolution recommending oversight ratios of one physician for every 500 basic life support providers, one for every 300 intermediate or advanced level providers, and one per 100 for, for each paramedic level provider. It's a, it's about creating better span of control over, over the clinical services. So this proposal would, would meet those requirements or, or recommendations by the Travis County Medical Society passed in, in 2017.
Thank you. And just for clarity's sake, I forgot to mention earlier that councilmembers Kitchen, Tovo, and Poole had signed on to be cosponsors. My office is working closely with Dr. Esq. in the budget office. And we have mapped out all the different pieces. We're just getting clarification on the numbers. And as soon as we have those together, we will be posting them to the message board. We have framed it as a two-year process to get up to the level that is recommended by the Travis County Medical Society. So there's a first group of things that we'll do, and then a second group in the second year. And as I mentioned, we believe this can be funded by the fee schedule. And then, as this moves forward, we'll be able to take advantage of some of the new fee structures that the E3 Initiative is going to be moving forward with, with those changes for alternative delivery moving forward. So thank you, Dr. Esq. I'm really excited about this direction. Thank you.
And councilman, if I could just mention one other thing, I apologize. We are, we are currently, I want to just thank council for your, your forward-thinking direction last year regarding the funding of a consultant to perform a, a equity and optimization study for the EMS system. We've met, and that's going through a negotiation process in order to award that contract. And I, I think we, we made that decision, we had that discussion a year ago, because we recognized that we're going to have budget challenges with, with the rollback rate, and we're going to continue to have significant expansion of the population. And, you know, we've historically had the building block model for emergency services based on population and, and size and response times. That's going to be hard to sustain. So what we're trying to do is create better alignment of, of resources and needs to avoid the, you know, facing a situation where we, we can't sustain that model indefinitely.
Councilmember Flanagan?
I, I would be interested in learning more about the kind of division of responsibilities between the city, the county, and central health when it comes to clinical services. You know, these are, these are really great ideas and powerful concepts to provide service that is, that can meet the need. I, I also think that Travis County is collecting nearly as much property tax as the city of Austin is. And so, you know, we, we need to have a different conversation in terms of our inter-local agreement with Travis County over EMS services. And I think the public needs to have a different conversation with their elected officials at the Commissioners Court and the Sheriff's Office about where their dollars are going on the county side. If a lot of the programs we're going to stand up are not going to be cost savings, they're going to be alternatives. But there will be cost savings in, in the hospitals and in the jails. And those cost savings can more likely be realized by the county and by central health. So I want to ensure that the public is hearing me say this now, because I often talk about this, this challenge. And it's easier for me to talk about it, because as I often say, half my district is Williamson County. I am also Williamson County resident. And on the Williamson County side, there is a dramatically different relationship financially between the county and its constituent cities. And I think there's a lot of work to be done there.
Thank you. Councilmember Kitchen?
Thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Flanagan. I think that that's something that's, that we should be exploring, particularly with regard to the community health paramedics, because we do have that, and perhaps the chief can speak to this, because we do have a relationship with the county with regard to emergency medical service, and also with regard to our health department and the public health services we provide. So I, I wanted to ask the chief, Chief Rodriguez, and, and perhaps Dr. Esq. if you'd like to chime in also, just to talk a little bit about the role, you know, the role of community health paramedics and emergency service has been evolving over the years. And that's what we see in the E3 Initiative. And it's been evolving from a national perspective. So that, there's a role there in injury and illness prevention. It's part of public health that our community health paramedics have been, have been playing. And if you could just speak to that for a minute, Chief, and also if you want to add anything, Dr. Esq., I think it helps, many of us may be somewhat familiar with this, but it really helps the public understand the value that, the, the value that our community health paramedics bring to the community from a public health perspective. And while you're at it, if there is anything you can share with us about that relationship with Travis County, that would be helpful.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor and council. Ernesto Rodriguez, Chief of Emergency Medical Services. Yes, the Community Health Paramedic Program is in, in Austin, probably one of the most mature and advanced of the programs that we see in the nation. We are truly a community health program. Many of the others who use this approach have done it in a slightly different way. And basically, they design systems that insurance companies will pay for, for the effort of raising revenues. We took a little bit different approach. We took a needs approach. When you look at our community, and we found individuals with unmet needs, that immediately focused us towards working with people who are experiencing homelessness. And our community health medics, because they're mobile, because they're agile and available to go anywhere in the community, they've been very, very effective at helping people that are experiencing homelessness meet many of their needs. Things as, as simple as shoes, clothing, food, those are big deals for, for individuals who are in a homeless situation. And so our program has really become a model in the nation for how to do community health using paramedics in, in communities, which is very rare. And so I think that, that we're, we're setting a great example for a lot of people to see. The, one of the things that, that it does for us is that it prevents the use of more expensive 911 resources. Anytime that we can travel out and see an individual who has needs and address their issues, and sometimes it's as simple as giving them a ride to a place where they can get some treatment. Sometimes it's as simple as we go to the pharmacy and get their medications for them, because they have no other transport. We know that we can keep them well. And we know that by helping them find homes and places to stay, that they are safe. And that prevents injuries and traumas and all the other things that, that come to complicate their lives and, and reduce the use of very expensive emergency responses. So that's one of the ways that we're doing this. Now we're beginning to expand into the mental health. And so we're starting to use the, the term CHPMH for mental health. The idea is that the individuals who do the mental health work will receive additional training. And we're working with NAMI and others to identify what that training is going to look like. So that when you get a community health paramedic who's a mental health specialist, they will have the tools, the equipment, the training, and partnerships with other members of the community to help care for individuals in a more effective way. We're looking already at partnering better with integral care and other providers that can go with us to the incidents. When we first encountered MCOT in, in our community, they were basically roaming around in their vehicles. And what we did is we provided a station for them so they could have a stable home. And then later, we provided them radios, taught them how to communicate. And now we dispatch them together. So we'll send a community health paramedic, we'll send a MCOT individual, a, a mental health professional, and an ambulance all at the same time. The ambulance crew serves the purpose of clearing the individual to be sure that it's safe for them to, to take care from someone else. And as soon as we know that, then the mental health professional takes over. I think the last time I looked at this, some, somewhere in the vicinity of 85% of the encounters that we had, were able to receive care in their home, or were able to be transported to a facility specializing in their need, rather than going to an emergency department that's very costly, occupies space, and, and really is an inefficient use of resources. So that program has, has worked out very well for us. Does that, does that answer your, your question, councilmember?
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Alter?
If, do folks have other questions for Dr. Esq.? Otherwise, I have a question for Chief Rodriguez.
Dr. Esq., thanks for being with us.
Thank you, Mayor.
Also, thank you for everything that you're doing on the pandemic as well. You and Director Hayden, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So I'm, on the EMS amendment that I put forward, worked closely with EMS and EMA to really hone in on the highest priorities. Chief Rodriguez, you guys added some support services at the last minute that I wasn't, didn't, didn't make it into that. Do you want to explain what those are? And then we can work to incorporate them as appropriate?
Yes, councilmember, I apologize. We didn't see it, that it was missed. And so we tried to get it to you because, and that you should at least know about what those needs are. With the department expanding as it is, when I came here, we were about 300 total. Now, looking down the years, we are over 600. And it takes a lot of resources to provide the, the services that are necessary to support the work of that many people. Some of the areas that we need additional staff in, we need an accounts payable supervisor. And that's an individual who helps us manage our reimbursement processes, and has direct communication with families and patients who are trying to pay their bills and work through insurance. Another position that we need is in billing and coding. And those are the individuals that actually go through the medical records and actually code the bill so that it can be qualified to be sent to a payer. We need a, a human resource specialist with the number of, of staff that we're growing to. We don't want to have delays. When somebody needs something, and they're working 24-hour shifts under very stressful circumstances, the last thing they need is to wait for red tape. And so we, we need additional help in the human resource department. So a human resource specialist. And another critical area that we need help in is in inventory control. We have a very small team in that area. And as you know, the equipment that we use is, is very expensive. It's intricate. And medications, we've got to be very careful with how we dispense them and all of that. So we need one more individual that could help with inventory control in that area. One more area that I, I don't see on my list, but it's in my strategic plan, I thought it'd be important just to mention only for awareness. And this is something that's been a, a lesson learned out of the COVID thing, is that respiratory protection is a big deal for us. It's a, it's a critical factor. And it is probably the, the main line of defense for our staff, keeping them safe from contracting diseases. Now, at this point, we, we have Millennium masks, which are heavy-duty masks for weapons of mass destruction. We have half-faced respirators that we're beginning to use. And we're evaluating whether or not we're going to bring in and implement, or which device we're going to implement, of PAPR, which is a positive air pressure respirator. With that, we need somebody that will help inventory that, maintain it, and keep everything in order. Because the last thing that you want is a failure of one of these devices at, at the bedside, because that would cause a infection transmission. So that, that's the only thing that, that is in my strategic plan that is not in, in the list that we gave you.
Great. Well, we will work with you, and we can put forward that, you know, when we do the, when we do the, the appropriate form that Ed has asked us to do. And I know that you're already working with my office on that. The other thing I just wanted to say is, thank you to you and your staff, you know, in, in putting together this amendment and in the, in the weeks you know, in putting together this amendment and in the weeks leading up to it that helped me to really hone in on EMS. Really heard a lot of hero stories, a lot about the challenges that our EMS are facing and how the pandemic is really pushing them to the max. And so, you know, I wanted to just say thank you and make sure that all of your staff know that we all really appreciate the work that you're doing. You know, just taking a, you know, taking a look at the suits that you have to wear and all of that in this 100-degree heat. You know, we need to recognize the need is there and that there are steps that we can take as a council to make that work easier. There are two additional ambulances that are not, that were on the wish list that are not covered between my amendment and the one that Councilmember Kitchen put forward. You know, I would love for us to include those, but I'm mindful of the pot of money that we potentially have available. So I really wanted to prioritize the first steps. But I hope that on an ongoing basis, we can recognize the importance of the work for keeping our community safe and see the value as well as leverage some of the opportunities through the chief medical officer and some of those shifts to drive some additional revenue that will help us to expand things and make sure that our community and our medics are safe. So thank you very much. And thank you to my colleagues who have co-sponsored various items related to this work with me. And thank you for sticking around to answer our questions.
Councilmember, thank you so much for the opportunity. One thing, if I may add, your concern about having a limited amount of dollars is a very real situation that we've experienced for several years now. We took some time to develop a method that we could use to continue to grow the needs of the department, continue to add personnel, but to do it at a lower price, a lower cost. And it's called the Paramedic Response Unit. And as a matter of fact, the community health, mental health responders are going to be paramedic response units. And it's a SUV with a single paramedic that has an additional level of training and credential, which the medical director has put together for this. And so there might be some opportunities in the future to rethink how we grow the organization. PRUs are easy to staff, a lot easier to hire, a lot less expensive to put on the street. And you can combine them to make other kinds of units. You can combine them in responses and you can make ambulances if you need to. So I'd like to talk to you about that in the future.
I would love to. And it's refreshing and welcoming to have a chief who's talking with us about how we can reimagine public safety. So I appreciate your work in doing that. Thank you.
Manager, do you want to close us out?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, in the coming days, we'll continue to work with each of your offices to develop the budget amendments as were put on the message board and as you think through the other factors that would impact how those amendments would be put forward. I'll see if Ed has any comments before we pass it back to Gina Fiandaca just to walk through our final agenda item for today, which will be very fast. Ed?
No, no additional comments, Spencer. Just again, happy to, for my staff and myself, happy to work with you as you flush out your various proposals and amendments.
Great. Obviously, this fiscal year budget includes investments in active transportation. And we had a resolution that came last week on Thursday, and we sent a memo out on Friday. And so I've just asked Assistant City Manager Fiandaca to walk through what was in that memo that we sent out and then some of the next steps that we'll be taking just to allow council to weigh in on that process. Assistant City Manager?
I have a real quick question before we start it. When can we expect the rest of the information to come out? Because I know the initial memo that came out was very helpful with background information, but it didn't include all of the information requested in the resolution.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember. That's exactly what Assistant City Manager Fiandaca is prepared to address.
Thanks.
Thank you, Manager. So Councilmembers, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here with you this afternoon. As we mentioned in our initial response to council last week, we have more than $200 million in project funding that is allocated to active transportation improvements that is programmed through 2024. And that will be built in the coming years. I wanted to take a moment to talk about what that means in terms of infrastructure investment in our community to enhance our safety and our mobility. We do have unfunded need. You all know that, and our community knows that. And while we're working to finalize the true magnitude of what that unfunded need is, we want to remind council that the community, that we have our needs within transportation. And many of our program priorities include active transportation investments. So in the meantime, the Transportation and Public Works Departments are focused on providing the improvements that are already promised to the community when they authorize the 2016 and 2018 bonds. For example, our Public Works Safe Routes to School program has shifted gears from working with the community to create the infrastructure plans that each council district has adopted to actually building those improvements called for in those plans. In the four months of 2020 alone, the Safe Routes to School team had more than 30 active transportation projects across the city. And they're taking advantage of the summertime months to really build those programs out so that when children return to school, they'll have safe routes to get there with their families. Similarly, our Bike Ways team has a few exciting projects that are already planned. We're wrapping up the transformative work along Shoal Creek and the multimodal transportation improvement project in that neighborhood. And there are so many others that are planned, Protected Intersections in Districts 1 and 3 through Pleasant Valley and Weberville Road. So many projects that are already getting daylighted through our robust community process. And outside of what we call local mobility programs such as safe routes and bike ways, we have significant investments that are in active transportation that will be delivering through improvements to regional roadways. We just broke ground on Anderson Mill Road, and that includes shared-use paths on both sides of the road that will improve connectivity for bicyclists and pedestrians. Similar projects are already underway in Spice Wood Springs Road, and those are anticipated to begin with utility relocation next year. The Corridor Program Office, that's led by Mike Trimble, has significant investments that are already planned. And you can see construction already along those corridors. Those programs include $40 million in behind-the-curve improvements to bicycle and pedestrian connectivity and safety on corridors such as MLK, Burnett Road, Riverside Drive, so many others. To just highlight that our capacity to deliver on these projects. We've rethought our coordination. And much of the work that I've outlined would not have been possible without the continued cooperation and partnership with our other infrastructure departments. And those include heavy support from capital contracting, SMBR, purchasing, so many others. I know Rob and Richard, Richard Mendoza and Rob Spiller are also here with me this afternoon. And they're operating at maximum capacity to deliver all of these projects without any additional funding. And if we accelerate further, you know, we do run the risk of overwhelming our community with the amount of construction that's going on at any given time. We are committed to a robust community process to really engage our community as we work through what those needs are and the process to put those plans into place. You know, we enjoy providing enhanced mobility and safety projects for our community. We enjoy working with you to identify what those needs are. And I want to just, you know, give a recognition to those mobility departments that have done all this work and they've accelerated this work throughout 2020 during the pandemic that has really tapped the resources of our departments, both in terms of how our staff deal with the virus and their families as well. You know, we're working on updating council on what future needs might be. And we really look forward to having those conversations with you.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Fiandaca. Obviously, a lot of great stuff happening, and there's a need that still exists. And so we're working closely with our staff to identify how we can quickly get back to the council on additional feedback on what capacity might be needed for the future. Assistant City Manager, do you have a timeline on when we might be able to get that memo back to council?
Manager, staff is keenly focused on that. We should have something by the end of this week. We want to have a comprehensive response. And we are appreciative of council's timeline and the deadline for a council really having to engage in a robust conversation about what any future needs might be. So we will have that by the end of this week, and we are putting together a comprehensive memo for your consideration.
Thanks. That was our presentation, but happy to stand for any questions.
I hope, I appreciate that you're getting this information back. I remember in 2016, the transportation staff wasn't too keen on doing that bond and didn't think it could do in the time that was required to happen. And I understand that. I think that when you focus on the kinds of things that are needed that the council's asking for how it would fit in. In the memo that you sent back, you talked about usually there's a process, a bonding process to identify needs. And I think it's safe to just focus on those things that already, thousands of hours of community engagement have already been spent on. There's the existing plans with, for the trails and the sidewalks and the roads and the priorities that are already set. So there's a lot of work that's already been done and I think established those needs. And I think you could probably focus on that kind of work, building out the things the community's already indicated that it wants to have done.
Mayor Potemgarza?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I think whatever the staff brings back, there needs to be, and you mentioned this, a focus on equity, frankly, a focus on the Eastern Crescent, and possibly building upon, you know, the mayor mentioned the, our big mobility bond. There were a lot of projects in there that just got funded for, you know, preliminary studies and areas of town that I have a lot of constituents right now asking, you know, why some parts of Del Valley don't have things in this budget. And I've had to explain that, you know, this budget process is not what funds big roadway projects like that. It is, it is big, it is bond measures that do that. And they are rightfully saying, well, you know, maybe we don't know how to ask for it, but we need it. And so I would just ask that there be a focus on areas of town that have long felt neglected and rightfully so. And because even, you know, it finished, the Rose Road project would include sidewalks and bike lanes and necessary active transportation there as well. And I think there is a big, not only an appetite, but a strong desire from everybody in our community to focus on areas of town that have not, have gotten the attention that they rightfully deserve. And they pay taxes too. And so that's what I would just add for your consideration. Thanks.
Councilmember Kitchen?
Yes, I appreciate getting this response at the end of the week. That'll be helpful and a comprehensive response. I do think, and for myself, I do want to understand the impact on staff. And because of what I'm, I'm wanting to understand the impact. When I think about what can be done over the next, you know, six years or whatever, I want to understand that we've got stacked up already a number of bonds that we have approved, both in 2016 and in '28. And we have bonds for issues other than transportation. And so I think it's important for us to understand the impact of any additional bond proposals. So I do think that that's appropriate for our staff to let us know. And that's one of the things that I want to hear.
Councilmember Paul?
Thanks, Mayor. Along the lines of what Assistant City Manager Fiandaca was talking about and what Councilmember Kitchen was just talking about, one of the questions that I submitted for staff to answer, I guess it was item 90 on our last agenda. So it was item 90, July 29, council item Q and A. So I asked for the remaining unspent amounts from the 2016 and the 2018 bonds, Division Zero, Transportation Safety, Urban Trails, Sidewalks, Safe Routes to School, and Bike Ways, or other relevant active transportation infrastructure. And the staff put together a really strong, helpful, insightful document with some numbers in it that you all can look at in the Q and A. But the bottom line is, the percent of the funds, we had $119 million in the 2016 proposition for just local mobility. And we've spent just a little over 34% of that. And in 2018, Proposition G, for the total for urban trails, rehab for sidewalks, and Vision Zero, intersection safety, we had $38 million in that bond. And we have spent not quite 3% of that money. And a lot of this is because of the necessary planning and the engineering and the fact that we have already tasked our CIP staff and our ETD staff with pretty significant infrastructure advancements. So I support the additional. We obviously have a lot of work to do on sidewalks and safe routes to school. My concern is that if we have money, we haven't spent it yet. And it would be a good idea to look at that in relation to if we are going to have an additional bond for active transportation with the amount of money that we put into that bond, knowing that we have significant projects that are in the queue and that have not yet been realized. And I, when I say significant, I mean significant. So I think that should impact, have some influence on our discussion of setting the amount for the bond for active transportation.
Okay. Councilmember Kitchen?
There's one other item I'd like to understand, not for today, but just as our staff is bringing information back to us, is I want to understand the impact on adding another bond from a financial standpoint, because I know we have a certain scope of bonding authority. And we already have other items, including our housing bonds and the other bonds that we have from the previous, you know, from our previous efforts in 2016 and 2018. So when we get information back, I'm going to want to understand what our bond, I'm not using the right terms, but I know we only have, we have certain bonding capacity. And bonding capacity, I'm sorry, thank you. We have certain bonding capacity. And I'm going to want to understand the impact on bonding capacity and also the impact on our community in terms of additional cost.
Okay. Anything else for today? Yes, Councilwoman Ellis?
Just my last two cents, as you are crafting that language in the subsequent memo that will tie up the rest of the information in the resolution. I think it would be helpful for us to know how bonding happens, not just about capacity at one given point in time. But for instance, if voters approve a bond in November, do we necessarily take that bond money out the day that it gets approved? Do we take it out six months later, a year later? And how does that planning work as we think about so bond investments? Because we know that we've approved affordable housing bonds that haven't fully been spent yet. And we're all excited to see where that goes and when that's going to be implemented. But I think the conversation around when that, when bonds are issued and what effect that has on finances is an important part of this conversation too, since they don't all get taken out the same day and they're not all finished on the same day. So I just want to make sure that that part is in there as well.
Or maybe Deputy Chief Financial Officer Greg, do you want to just respond briefly to that?
Certainly. Thank you, City Manager and Councilmember Ellis. Certainly, I think we will add some additional language and explanatory facts about how we, the city, goes through bond, issuing bonds and how it works with our tax rate. We did include some in the memo that ACMP and Doc sent out on Friday related to our outstanding bonds. We did include some in the memo that ACMP and Doc has sent out on Friday related to our outstanding bonds that we still need to issue from the 16 and 18 bonds. But technically, but typically speaking, when we have a bond program, it's usually over several years and the bonds are issued as we spend or in conjunction with our spending. And then the associated tax rate increase happens with that as well. So we, in essence, are making sure that the spending is in line with our bond sales and in line with as we manage the overall city tax rate. So we could certainly add some more information, building on what we, that was included in the Friday memo for the next round of correspondence.
Okay. Anything else? Councilmember Kitchen?
And I just wanted, wanted to reiterate the language of the resolution that says, "In providing this information, staff shall analyze existing capital project delivery systems and processes in order to identify potential changes in resources and staffing requirements that would be necessary to accelerate project delivery and maximize the number of projects to be included in these proposals to be completed within six years." And I think we've talked about if, if you give us something that's a little longer, shorter, just so we have an understanding of, of the financial mechanisms, that would be really helpful. But I appreciate all the hard work that's going into this and I'm very eager to see the next step.
Councilmember Kitchen?
I think this is inherent in, in what's coming back to us too, and part of our conversation we'll have. But we, yes, there is a process for issuing bonds, but you might also speak to in, in what you provide us, and then we'll have a conversation about it when we talk about this item, about how, how priorities are set across the issuance of bonds. So, and we could talk about that later. One of my concerns is having a lot of bond projects out there and not being assured of what comes first.
Councilmember Flanagan?
I've, I've shared my concerns about this in prior meetings, so I won't repeat those words. But, you know, if, if this is something folks are insistent on proceeding with, then I do share Mayor Portem's concerns about equity. And I would prefer to see to Councilmember Kitchen's point, some measure of contract with the voters that would define how the sequence of projects would be decided. If that's something that staff would decide and the only time the council in the future would see it is contracts on an agenda, or would projects within that bucket have to be reviewed by the Planning Commission? Would there be a separate body that would make those decisions? How would we make those determinations? I'm, I'm very interested in, in some type of measurement about that.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all the stuff we have on our agenda. It is 5:26. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.